Good evening, everyone. I will now call this special meeting of the Albany City Council to order. City Clerk, can we please have the role?
Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mickey.
Here.
Mayor Tiedemann.
Here. And we will go into our study session, which is on the Street Tree Management Plan. Staff, could we please have your report?
Good evening, Council. Jeff Bond, Community Development Director, give me a moment here to get the mouse to work. There we go. There we go. Excellent. Thank you for your patience. Again, Jeff Bond, Community Development Director. I'm going to give a very brief presentation, introduction to our presentation, and then turn it over to our consulting team for the more substantive part of our study session with you this evening. Starting off, I just want to acknowledge that our Civic Spark fellows last year and this year, Sutton Payne currently, and Natasha Gallatin last year have had a big part of this process so far. I just want to acknowledge their work. So a little bit of background on this plan. It's something that we've been talking about, actually, and city council policies have talked about doing for a few years now. It was identified in our general plan back in 2016, and again, in our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan in 2019. And those documents recognize the importance of modernizing our policies and programs and goal, program goals and so forth. The preparation of the Street Tree Management Plan is in two phases. The first phase has been completed. That was basically collection of the inventory. That was literally counting trees in the city. That began back in November 2022. As you can see on the screen, that inventory work was completed this spring in April. Earlier this, also this spring, we started the process of selecting a consultant for the preparation of Phase Two, which is the actual plan. We presented an RFP in the spring, and then just last month, you approved a contract with Hort Science to prepare this plan. Again, as I mentioned, the Phase One was the preparation of the inventory, of the collection of the inventory. That information is, there's a community viewer of the inventory available, and basically, it is the foundational information and data that we would be using for the Street Tree Management Plan and for the community as well. And just, just for information's sake, forty-eight hundred, over forty-eight hundred trees are part of the current inventory. So Phase Two is, as I mentioned, the preparation of the RFP has been completed. The selection process involved both staff and representative of the Parks Recreation Open Space Commission. We interviewed three firms and selected Hort Science out of that process. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Daria, who, if you could go to the podium, that would be awesome, to go into more detail on the work that they are going to be doing. I should say, before turning it over to the consultant team, this is not intended to be an audit of past practices. We're really starting with a clean slate here, hopefully to build, start with a vision, community vision, based on some of these policy documents I mentioned, and then move into a plan that will guide future implementation of a management plan for our, the street tree portion of our urban canopy. So with that, it's all yours.
Good evening, Council members and staff. My name is Daria Barar. I am the Managing Consulting Urban Forester at Hort Science Bartlett Consulting.
I'm Ryan Suttle, Consulting Arborist and Urban Forester at Hort Science Bartlett Consulting.
All right. All right. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about our project team and our experience, and our project organization and approach. So I'll start by introducing us. Like I said, we are Hort Science Bartlett Consulting. Our focus is arboriculture, horticulture, and urban forestry consulting. We are Bay Area focused. However, we do have jobs sometimes outside of the Bay Area. Our office currently has eight employees, and we work throughout the Bay Area on urban forestry type issues throughout the counties. Our company was founded in 1983 by Nelda Matheny, who is a heavily published author in arboriculture and urban forestry. She was joined shortly after that by Jim Clark, who became her partner at Hort Science. And we joined the FA Bartlett Tree Expert Company in 2018 and became Hort Science Bartlett Consulting. Our office is based in Berkeley, California since 2022. So as, as we said earlier, I'm Daria. I'm going to be the lead consultant on this project. Ryan Suttle will be working with me, and we also have Scott Stringer, who is very well experienced in the field of urban forestry management. All of our staff are certified arborists. We have, all of our staff are tree risk assessment qualified. Both Ryan and I are board master, oh no, Ryan is a board master certified arborist. I'm sorry, I'm not. And Ryan is also a utility specialist. Both Ryan and I, and one of our other consultants, are registered consulting arborists, and I am tree and plant appraisal qualified by ASCA. Also, I'll take a step back and just talk a little bit about my municipal experience. Personally, I worked with the city of Pasadena for fifteen years before joining Hort Science. So I was a city employee. We had sixty-two thousand street trees in the right-of-way that we were managing. And so from personal experience, I have a lot of urban forestry on-the-ground knowledge, everything from opening and closing complaints on tree issues to managing windstorm response and rose parade stuff. All right. We're going to talk a little bit about our project organization and approach, and I'm going to hand it over to Ryan.
Can we get the next slide, please? Oh, maybe one more. I think these got a little bit out of order. All right. So just to broadly start off, kind of a three-thousand-foot view.
This was supposed to be me.
Do you want to take it?
Sorry about that. Sorry, that was supposed to be me. I was going to introduce what a Street Tree Management Plan is. So it's kind of a clearinghouse for all things street tree oriented, and we're hoping that it will contain a couple of other pieces that are unique to Albany that aren't necessarily always included in a management plan. So one of those pieces is a vision, and usually, that would be included in other planning documents, but I think for, for this project, it's really vital to the, at least the beginning of the process and such. So as a part of the process, we're hoping to create canopy targets and assess what we have, and also develop some goals that are attainable and reasonable, but also strive for goals that are needed. We're going to be trying to balance the benefits of the urban forest with the on-the-ground resources that we have. And we are going to be trying to maintain the aesthetic characteristic of the city through the planning document that we're going to be producing. All right, next slide. Ah, now I'm going to hand it over to Ryan.
All right. So just broadly, we, you know, see a few areas of opportunity and also challenge here, as is present anywhere. Some of the main opportunities that we'll be focusing on are beautification, you know, like Daria just mentioned, trees have a lot of aesthetic value and character, especially in Albany. And we want to make sure that we're maintaining that and balancing that with on-the-ground management, an actual reality of how those trees are. We want to make sure that they serve the people and also provide habitat for urban wildlife. And also, you know, one of the main, the simplest and maybe the most important benefit of trees is cooling through shade and evapotranspiration, and that's only going to become more important as we see climate change progress. And it's important to manage with a future focus, to really keep that in mind. Some of the challenges that we see are managing a living, dynamic resource like a tree. There's no one-size-fits-all management technique, especially when you bring people and communities into it. So we want to make sure that we're managing that in a way that meets the desires and needs of the population here. Again, that added context of climate change can add a little flavor there. And also, the shared responsibility of street tree management in Albany being shared between the city and the landowners is kind of a unique challenge that we'll have to keep in mind here. So we'll start the project overview here, the Street Tree Management Plan. It's an assessment of current status, challenges and opportunities. Again, that starts with the inventory that Jeff mentioned earlier, kind of baseline of what we have. You can't manage something unless you, you know, define what you have and set targets for what you want it to be. To that end, to see where we want it to be, we will begin a stakeholder engagement and community outreach portion. Using that as context and that vision to guide this whole process, we'll do a revision of city ordinance policy and procedures, you know, not starting from the ground up. There's already a program here that we can try to improve and work with. And through that whole time, Daria and I and our other colleagues will be providing project management for that. So, assessment of current status. Again, we got to know what we have to manage it, right? We need to balance practicality with aspiration. We need to start with the trees that we have, figure out, you know, their age, their condition, and how we can strive to make that urban forest meet the vision. And again, we want to use a larger framework of sustainability in this management, trees being important green infrastructure in a built environment. You know, we need to carefully weigh the benefits that they can provide with the maintenance. Some specific areas that we'd like to enhance and grow, you know, I already touched on this a little bit earlier, but maintaining neighborhood identity and aesthetic through tree management. One or two examples of that are, you know, some of those large eucalyptus along Solano. Their uniform in age and, and they add a lot of character to that street. They kind of define the landscape there, and we need to carefully manage those to maintain that. Other large trees like sweet gums, they really, you know, have some maintenance needs that we need to, need to keep in mind while maintaining that aesthetic character. We want to create a more equitable distribution of urban forest benefits. The benefits that trees provide are really local to where they are, and we want to make sure that all residents have equal access to those and to bolster climate resilience of the community into the future.
All right. And at my fifth, during my tenure with Pasadena, I was the staff person for the Urban Forestry Advisory Committee. So I have a lot of experience working with stakeholder groups and councils and commissions like yourselves, and I'm really excited to start that process here. So that will definitely be a part of our public outreach and community engagement process. Will just be the, the, the commissions and committees that the city already has to support the trees in this city. Additionally, we will be looking to be at public events and have an online survey, and we will be looking to meet with smaller focus groups that will allow us to really get to know what the vision for this community is. Next slide, please. So right on target here, the vision for their urban forest is definitely going to be that visioning process with community groups and stakeholders to reflect, to accurately reflect the values of the community. So that's our goal with our, our vision here. And in terms of policies and procedures, like I said, I have the benefit of fifteen years' experience in the urban sector, so it, or in the municipal sector. So it hopefully will be, in addition to those fifteen years' experience, I've also worked with several cities since then, East Palo Alto, Menlo Park, on revisions to their policies and procedures. And I think I have a, a unique perspective and can bring a unique perspective to not just the actual policy, but how it might actually work in, on the day-to-day operations. So hopefully, we can make some recommendations that will really help drive the way that trees are managed here in Albany. All right. We have some plan influences. Of course, there will be, we'll be looking at the Climate Action Plan and climate change in general. We'll be looking at M Welo requirements and recycled water, as well as, I know that solar codes and sewer, the way that sewers are maintained and such, can have a real big impact on how trees are managed. So we want to make sure that we're in lockstep in all of our policies and procedures, so that we don't have those loophole things that keep us swirling and really not managing trees the way that we want to. So we're going to take a look at all those documents and make sure that we're, we're on target with all of them. So we've told you tonight about our project team and our project organization and approach, and thank you so much for listening. We look forward to hearing from you.
And I want to apologize if I got this order of the slides a little scrambled and combining them.
You're fine, you're fine.
They went with the flow really well. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none. We will go to public comment.
Hi, my name is Brian Martin. I'm a Parks Recreation Open Space Commissioner, and I'm saying I'm eager to see this begin, and I'm happy to see this beginning presentation. Some of the things that have come before the commission include challenges with, you mentioned, like, for example, the eucalyptus trees on Solano were all roughly the same age, and some of them are starting to fail. Our commission had a presentation on that, and some tree removals will be coming before us at our next month's meeting, we're told. But then also, liquid amber trees around the city have a similar situation that come before our commission, where they're nice, well-established trees in a lot of ways, but they were all planted about the same time. Other cities deal with the same problem that they, they begin to start, have limb failure and other issues that, that lead to them. But some people have said, oh, but if you prune them from a younger age, then they do better later in life. Well, the, you know, the ship has already sailed on that for our stock of trees in the city, and I don't think anyone's ever going to plant liquid amber in these small tree wells that we have in an urban environment. But, so it's not really about liquid amber, but it, the, the point has been made that proactive, rather than reactive pruning, would be really helpful. Right now, my understanding from what I've seen on the commission is that pruning happens after limbs drop and some assessments are made or, and so forth. But, but of course, for proactive management, that requires money if it's something we're not doing right now. So the city council should be thinking about what kind of funds, you know, I'm eager to see what the public comes up with, what these public processes come up with for, for what kind of management considerations there should be. But I think a lot of them are going to, at least some of them are going to involve additional resources needed, and, and so the city council should be thinking about where that would come from. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone in the room? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Does anyone have any comments?
First, my thanks, because I know you've been in the room before. I've seen it on video, and I appreciate your, your service to the, to the city in that regard. My main interest is the canopy aspect. So looking at the, the closest long-term geological stations in Berkeley, I'm looking at the record of that, which goes back to 1893, up until basically this century. There was about two days a year that was over ninety degrees on average, and then it jumped to six, and it's still going up. There was about one day every fifteen years that was over a hundred, and now there's pretty much a day every year that's over a hundred, and for the first time, we've had backpack days that are over a hundred. We have very little air conditioning in the city, so I think we're at pretty substantial risk, given what's going on. So I think developing a canopy has got to be really a high priority to try to cut that urban heat island. And so in that regard, I have some interest in the shading, the pavement, obviously, to the extent possible, given the narrow parkways. And my understanding, which may be out of date, is that the, the species that are approved per street are based on the, generally based on the width of the, the parkway and the presence of a, a power pole. And I don't know if there's some differentiation in terms of species where, that are not on the power pole side, where it's just the drops, which aren't as sensitive, to my understanding, if larger species at maturity are allowed on that side. Because the species that are allowed underneath the power poles don't really provide substantial shade, even a maturity, to my knowledge, which is only my amateur knowledge, to the, the street pavement. So if there's at least going to be partial shading of that asphalt, it seems like it needs to come from the other side. It seems like there are some trees that, that the roots seem to go pretty much straight down. I know there's a coast live oak on the block I live on, that the trunk has filled the space from, from curb to sidewalk and hardly damaged either of them remarkably. So there are some species that, that do well, and obviously, there's a lot that don't do well. So hopefully, be looking out for those opportunities. As far as what we have now, I don't know. My, my sense is, which again may be wrong, is that a lot of the risk assessment currently is complaint-driven, whereas I would like to move towards a more uniform, objective process for a variety of reasons. I mean, one for safety, obviously, but also for equity, you know, so certain, certain socioeconomic groupings have more institutional knowledge than others in terms of access relief from conditions. And so I think it's incumbent on the city to, to take an objective approach and roll assessments across the city on whatever basis makes sense. I'm hoping that the, the master plan or the process can come up with some estimate of the cost for the city to maintain the trees, including pruning, including watering new trees through the first many dry seasons, so they don't die, rather than waiting on the adjacent property owner to, to do so. And while that wouldn't necessarily be the city's legal responsibility, the sidewalk repair program could be a model for that, where the city is repairing the sidewalks, even though it's not its legal responsibility, it's maintaining that legal responsibility with the adjacent property owners. I may have misunderstood, but, but watching, watching some of the Parks Rec and Open Space Commission meetings regarding tree removals, you know, over the last few months, last week, in preparation for this, there was one tree, if I understood, it was in healthy condition, but it didn't have enough space. There was city property that the sidewalk could have been moved, but there was a hedge on the property, on city property, that was planted by the adjacent property owner, and I guess there was reluctance to take out the hedge in order to move the sidewalk, even though it was city property, to save the tree. I would like to see a policy that if sidewalk needs to be moved to save a tree, and the city has property to do it, that that's what happens. You know, if there's, I mean, these hedges were like, you know, this tall, so to lose a huge tree because we're preserving a, a small hedge, that wouldn't be, wouldn't be the choice I would make. Sorry, machine just went to sleep. Yeah, let's see. Yeah, I think that's, that's pretty much it. There are some, also some small species that exist, or small, smaller maturity species that I would like to see never planted again. I know that on the sidewalk between where I live and Solano, there's a, I guess we call it a Yoshino cherry. I didn't know that's what it was called until I saw the inventory that I've ducked under for fifteen years. inventory that I've ducked under for 15 years, and pretty much when I look in street view, wherever those are, that seems to be not in uncommon condition for that species. There's other species that, like the, the red buds, that seem to have pretty poor structure, they don't get very big, and they tend not to have many, tend many years not to have leaves on their, their upper stems. So, you know, there's a variety that don't seem to either do well and/or are just so small that, that they're an impediment. A constituent actually said that they oppose planting any more street trees, because they're like six foot five, and they are constantly banging their head or having to duck under trees in Albany. So that's, it's not a good, good situation. So, yeah, so those are, those are my comments.
You get to go last. That's why I'm mayor.
You are mayor, so you get that right. But I'll, it's Robner.
Just a couple of things that I, and, and this most likely will probably be included in everything that you're, you're doing, but just taking into account, you know, a lot of the fire hardening aspects of around houses, that the fire department is also, you know, trying to make sure that that gets taken care of, because the insurance in California is going crazy, or they've all left, so. So just to, to keep the fire hardening portion as part of it, also root systems. I've seen a lot of, I'm a real estate agent, I've seen a lot of, you know, home inspections and stuff, where the root systems have really taken over the underneath part of the house, if the tree wasn't either managed properly, or the blockers weren't in place prior to them being planted. So that's a concern of mine. And, you know, you brought up a good point about the power poles, keeping in, keeping in mind that, you know, some of these power poles may be, you know, going underground soon, you know, kind of laying that into part of the plan of what streets we might know are soon going to be undergrounded, so that therefore, the tree that could be placed there now won't have that worry or condition of, of how high it grows, or where it grows in, in conjunction with a current power pole that might be there. So those are just some of my comments.
Thank you for your presentation. I think this is something I've been looking forward to, actually, I think a bunch of the things the city has been working on are things that are, come to a nexus together. Our staff has heard me say this many times, but I think this is an incredible opportunity, that we are looking at our sidewalks, we're looking at our street trees, we're looking at our tree lighting, we're looking at our active transportation, and that's really an opportunity to really ask the question of what kind of city do we want to leave for our children? Because many of our trees were planted generations ago, and that was an incredible thing that past generations did for us. I think this question of long-term maintenance is something that maybe was left a little optimistically to everyone in the community, and I hope that's something we, as a council, can work towards financing and making sure that we're leaving our city in a better place. I think one of the things that I'll be looking for is, you know, I, I agree with both the comments that Jen and Preston made, but I'd like us to understand, we have the constraints of what our streets look like today. I'd like us to have an understanding of what, what would be ideal, or what would be at least better. And so I ask this because staff is currently going around, and in cases, moving sidewalks, or in a few examples, they're prototyping, moving the curb to allow the tree roots to have more space. And so some of our streets are 32 feet wide. I think those streets, they're not necessarily heavily trafficked streets, those are ones where there could be almost a more consistent moving of the curb, perhaps not the entire length, not, I'm not going to freak out staff by asking us to change our storm sewer inlets, right? So I recognize that those are like millions of dollars a block, as we start to touch those things. But what are those things that we can do that give our trees a good chance in the long term? Because the trees that were planted, were planted, as Preston mentioned, in a time where they weren't being stressed as often. Early in my career in California, I worked in the Central Valley a lot. The group CivicWell, which at the time was known as Local Government Commission, did a whole series of studies that talked about tree canopies, and how tree canopies are great for people, they're great for the habitat, and they're great for street maintenance, because they reduce, they slow the wearing down of that roadway. That is never something that I thought we would have to worry about here with our beautiful air conditioning system that is the Golden Gate, and the, the wonderful cool air that comes in almost every day. But as Preston said, that climate change is changing, and we're going to have more heat events, and so it's all the more important that we cover our streets. So I guess what I would ask is that as we move forward, and as we look at these options, that we not, that we provide some options, say, what would be better than less than 25 inches, I think is what the data says right now, in terms of growing area for a tree, and even for those that are under 40 inches. I know in the work that we do, or often in many cities that we work in, it's four feet clear, better if it's five, better if you can get six, whether it's, whether it's a tree grate, or it's a planter strip. But if you look at it from that perspective, the vast majority of our streets, we're asking our trees to really work hard to grow in the spades they have. And I know I've talked to community members and say, well, our trees have historically grown well in that, and I would say, just because they grew and they survived, doesn't mean that they were thriving, or that they had the best chance for success. So I think those aren't really questions, maybe it was a little bit of my vision, but I, I'm hoping that we'll look beyond just the constraints that we have, where our trees are today.
Have more, more thoughts? Sparked, sparked by that. I believe the city in its sidewalk repair program, and I may be wrong, but I, but I think it adopted an approach. So when the program started, the city staff, engineers, started curving the sidewalks away from larger trees, which is, at first, I was like, ah, I don't know about that, you know, because I'm a pedestrian, I like to get where I'm going, and there's often this design ethos of, oh, pedestrians just, you know, they're not really going anywhere, they're just meandering around. But I came to really like it, and be won over, both to save the trees, and also, you can still take a straight line, even though the sidewalk curves a bit. And so then, at some point, I, I suggested to staff, and I think it's been adopted, but I don't think it's official policy in the city, to every sidewalk repair next to a tree opening, curve the sidewalk away to give it more opening, no matter the size of the tree, just do it proactively. It was, it was initially only being done, you know, where the trees were, were of considerable size. And so, again, I don't think that was adopted formally, but I think that's something that could be and should be adopted formally, at least as a part of, as a part of the, the plan. I think there's, there's analysis that can be done that would be helpful for the community in terms of, you know, how many, how many trees, what types of trees, and where had they been planted by request over each of the last five years, you know, which has an equity dimension, and then also, how many of those have survived under the current paradigm of the adjacent property owner being responsible for watering them. My, my subjective sense is that the death rate has been extremely high, but I think actually having data on that, and thinking about a potential measure to fund, fund a street tree program in the city, that's the kind of data I think that would be helpful to have in pocket, to present to the voters, is, you know, we've been doing it this way, and this is a result, and if you want something different, then we can't keep doing things the same way, and here's what it would look like if we did, if we did it different, if we could actually pay for watering the trees each summer. And, yeah, and in that regard, I think it would also be useful to, to go through the data regarding the sidewalk repairs that have been done, to map or inventory, you know, trees that have been, not been removed as part of sidewalk repair, trees that have not been removed because they didn't need to be removed, trees that have not been removed because measures were taken during sidewalk repair, curving it away, you know, doing, doing other things to really save that tree, trees that were removed, because there's a perspective now that, that, you know, trees are basically always being removed for sidewalk repair, which I don't think is accurate, but I like to have the numbers. And so I think to the extent that Vice Mayor Mickey's saying, you know, this is an articulated situation with street trees, sidewalks, active transportation, having that more full perspective in terms of how all these things are interacting, so that those who are interested can, can have that information available, yeah, would be, would be useful.
I'll say briefly that I agree with everything the other council members have said before me, especially as Vice Mayor put it, of this is, you know, similar to our plans for housing and a lot of other things, of this is how we look forward to what the city should look like, and what we want it to look like for, you know, the next 60 years, as that's kind of what we have to plan for when we're talking about buildings or trees. And so I'm, I'm glad we're doing it, especially given, you know, as our consultant knows, we, we have, we've had on this council appeals for street removal, and anytime we have something like that happen, what I want us to do is zoom out and look at the policy as a whole, and what are our standards around it, and how do we sort of deal with this as a whole, and not just in this one particular instance. And so this allows us to do that while becoming more proactive and less complaint-driven, which is always a good thing. So thank you both very much for the work, and we're looking forward to even more of it. Any last thoughts?
Sorry, one more last thought. This has been something that's come up on Solano Avenue a lot, and I just want to add this in here, is obviously, with anything that we do, we want to also make sure we limit our liability, and one of the things that has been a big liability on Solano, I feel, is, is the open tree wells that are not, you can either catch a leg down some of the metal gratings along San Pablo, or sometimes there's no metal grating, and it's just a tripping hazard. So I want to make sure that we find a way to kind of address that within this situation as well, too.
Yeah, I will definitely second that. I know there's, there's parkways in my neighborhood that have no vegetation, and the adjacent property owner assiduously keeps them from having vegetation, and I think as a result of that process, the, the ground level is basically at the base of the concrete slab, so you're going along this, this big trough, and so it'd be great if, if the grade next to the sidewalk was actually at the sidewalk, in all instances, yeah. I think further on that, the, the tree maintenance issue, and this is something that probably can't be quantified, but the, the mayor mentioned a, a appeal that came before us, and looking at the tree, I, I asked our city's forester, you know, to guess, when was this tree pruned that led to this, this, I call it multi-trunk, but multi-branch, I don't know, you know, it was forking it about four feet off the ground into four different, whatever your terminology is for it. And he said, well, probably 40 years ago. And my guess is that probably wasn't done by the city pruning, I mean, I don't know. My guess would be it was done by an adjacent property owner, because that's the kind of thing, you know, I could make a mistake and do. And so I think if the city doesn't take more responsibility for pruning, not necessarily legally, but actually, you know, doing it the same way with the sidewalks, then we could end up in 60 years where we are now, with all these trees that are, you know, have poor structure, and they're fine when they're 20 years old, but when they get to 40 years old, 60 years old, they're not fine anymore, and they have to come out. So, so I think you're hearing a lot of interest in this plan helping to frame, you know, what would the cost look like, both on the, the planting and establishment side, and with equity across the city, because it's quite variable across the city now. And so that might be, you know, more of a 10-year capital, 20-year capital, you don't want to do it all at once, and then what does the maintenance side look like, which would be more of an ongoing revenue stream.
You have other last thoughts?
Just a brief last thought on, on everything, not on everything, I guess, specific to outreach and engaging community members, some are, I, I guess, on the vein of what Vice Mayor Mickey was alluding to, that we would love to have something that is present for generations to come. I think about my own children in that aspect. But one of the most critical ways to make people, to ensure folks are appreciative and aware is really engaged in that knowledge transfers process. And part of that, and I think that, you know, requires holding us and city council accountable, and working, collaborating with city staff, and our consultants here, in a, really highlighting that, you know, climate resilient and drought-resistant trees and plants don't happen in a binary, it's not a, you know, that's not how it occurs, it happens more so as a gradient, as we see with almost everything else in life, income levels, social structures, all these things happen in a gradient. I think that's an important piece to communicate to the community when we are doing any form of outreach, so people understand, folks who don't find the, the notion of talking about trees and street management of trees as exciting as maybe I do, that maybe they could walk away with this nugget of information that they could pass on to their children, explain to them, you know, the tree in front of your house, it carries with it a lot of history, but it also operates in this gradient, this gradient across the city. Just my two cents about regarding outreach and engagement.
Staff have what they need from us?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you all for the work, we look forward to seeing more of it. With that, we will move to the adjournment of this special meeting, and we will come back for our regular meeting at seven o'clock. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I will call this regular meeting of the Albany City Council to order. Councilmember Jordan, can you please read the land acknowledgement?
Certainly. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederate villages of the Shahn. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloni tribe. Thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community, and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together...
I can't hear.
Thank you for letting me know. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home.
Thank you. City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Here.
Councilmember Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember De Lopez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Here.
Mayor Tiedemann?
Here. That brings us to our ceremonial proclamation. Our proclamation today will be read by Councilmember Hanson Romero, and is to honor World Polio Day, and I believe, Jack, are you accepting on behalf of Rotary Club?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Proclamation in recognition of World Polio Day, October 24th, 2023. Whereas Rotary is a global network of neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus, and in 1988 helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization's U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, Angave, the Vaccine Alliance to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas World Polio Day was established by Rotary International to commemorate the birth of Jonas Salk, the medical researcher who led the first team to develop a vaccine against polio. And whereas polio doesn't have any cure, making prevention through vaccines absolutely important. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas Rotary has contributed more than 2.1 billion and countless volunteer hours to protecting more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas global conflicts in Africa and other countries increase the risk of more paralyzed children due to halting immunizations. And whereas the most effective and trusted vaccine distributors are women from the local community, and their service in this dangerous job cannot be overlooked. And whereas Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $10 billion to the effort. Thank you.
Thank you, council and staff, for this proclamation. Rotary appreciates it. I have, I'm president of Albany Rotary, and I have some fellow Rotarians in...
There were two. Oh, she's over there. Okay.
Anyway, thank you for doing this proclamation. We feel that we're getting very close to eradicating polio, so it's a very important topic for Rotarians, from the international level all the way down to the level of Albany Rotary. And people, when you talk to people about it, they're surprised that polio hasn't been eradicated, and they think it has, but it still continues. There are really two countries now where polio, there's still wild polio virus. It's Afghanistan and Pakistan. So far this year, in 2023, we're down to just seven cases of wild polio in those two countries. Last year at this time, it was 19. So we think we're making progress. There's big efforts to do immunization in those countries that are being supported. So we're hoping that a time will come when it is completely eradicated, and be the second disease to be eradicated in our human history. So thank you for the proclamation. This is very important to get the word out about World Polio Day, so that people are educated about polio and take action to end it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have... Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, do we have any councilmembers who'd like to make a comment?
Well, I have a question. I'm greatly encouraged to hear that the case numbers are down this year, and I don't expect you to have the answer to this, but is anti-vax sentiment something that has to be dealt with in the countries where a wild strain still exists?
In short answer is yes. You may recall that there was an outbreak in New York, near New York City last year, and it was the first time wild polio had been detected in the United States in a long time. And it was concentrated in one town where there was a high rate of anti-vaccination feeling going on. So, it may have contributed to it.
Was the genetics on that run to determine where that wild strain came from, what the reservoir was? Or did it come from Afghanistan?
They checked the sewage all the time to find where the polio is occurring, and that's, you know, because that's how it's spread, is through dirty water.
Yeah, I was just curious how it got to New York, if it's, if it came from another, you know, if it came from somewhere else or if-
I don't know exactly. I think I heard something about it was someone who had been overseas and traveling and brought it back.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you for your work, and thank Rotary for its work.
Any further comments from Council?
I just want to say thank you to Rotary for all the good work that you guys do in the community.
No, I will echo that. Thank you for being here. That brings us to the City Manager's report. Nicole, please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. I have good news that I'm happy to share at the top of my report here. Albany was selected for a Department of Energy grant, which was a very ambitious initiative for staff to undertake. So, I very much appreciate the work that they put into this project and where it will go from here. A short summary is that this is a grant to help with decommissioning natural gas pipeline within the city. Major work underway, and we look forward to coming back to the Council to discuss the next steps of that program. And more information can be found as posted, as our City Clerk will display. Thank you to all who joined us this weekend for the fabulous, always popular Pancake Breakfast and Open House at our Fire Department. We had over 760 breakfasts were served, and of course, the money goes to the Alicia Ann Rousch Burn Foundation, which is an incredibly important cause, and I appreciate all of our staff who worked hours and hours in preparing and conducting the event. We also had the opportunity to educate those attending with regard to fire safety and emergency preparedness, which of course is another critical opportunity to get connected in our community. Upcoming Halloween is on October 31st. Please be prepared and safe. We will have Coffee with a Cop on Halloween. It is at the Aloneye Greenway on Solano Avenue at Masonic. So, please, parents, you may need coffee as you're going out with your children. Please take the opportunity to meet our officers and talk about your neighborhood concerns or issues, and really just get to know our people. The pavement maintenance program is starting this month. Really looking forward to this as it will help maintain a number of city streets. You will begin to see no parking signs put up on the streets 72 hours ahead of the working day. Please make arrangements to avoid traveling on the day of construction if possible. And these should be fairly short and succinct projects, so hopefully not too many impacts, but definitely a significant portion of streets will be having work on them. So, please take a minute to look at our construction alert pages on our website for additional information as well, including the map as displayed here. We did a quarterly cleaning of our Big Belly containers on sidewalks and in parks. While this sounds like, yeah, well, that's great. If we have the pictures, it's a pretty fabulous work that's done. The before and after, of course, speaks for itself, but we tend to get a significant amount of graffiti in our parks, and this ongoing proactive work by Public Works really helps maintain and manage that as best as we can. On October 19th, we will have the Great Shakeout Earthquake Drill. This will occur at 10:19 a.m. on October 19th for millions of people who are choosing to practice earthquake safety. We have a number of tips on our own website, including our CERT team information, as well as the Shakeout page itself with some simple tips, as well as the app that you can now get to give some advanced, a few seconds at least, advance notice should an earthquake be headed our way. And a reminder that the Albany Hill survey closes at the end of this month, so if you would like to give your input or feedback regarding tree management on the hill and everything else hill-related, please take the opportunity to go online. Also, translated versions available to submit your information and interests. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions or comments from Council?
I'll just comment, I think staff is being modest. The grant that was won, Albany won, was only one of 12 grants that was awarded, and the only one on the West Coast, so rather remarkable. I want to recognize that. Thank you, staff.
I'll just briefly agree and also offer my thanks for all the work the Fire Department did for the Pancake Breakfast. I got to stop by, and it looked like everyone, including all the firefighters, were having a lot of fun. So, we appreciate all they did. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No.
Okay, seeing none. We will go to Good of the City. This is for persons desiring to address the City Council on any item that is not on our agenda. Each person will have three minutes. The Brown Act limits the Council's ability to take action or discuss items not on agenda. Therefore, they will sometimes be referred to staff for comment or to a future agenda. And in this, and all public comment opportunities, we ask everyone to address the Council and maintain respect, as we want everyone to feel comfortable making their comment. I see we have someone at the podium.
Good evening. Jack Kenny. My other hat is Albany Film Fest, which just concluded yesterday with the last showing and the Gala Awards, which were held in Albany. The films, as you know, were shown in El Cerrito, since we lost the Albany Twin, and we had very successful turnout. And as a matter of fact, yesterday's show, Sunday's show, was sold out, and people were turned away. So, we're very happy about that. So, we want to thank City Council and the City of Albany for all your support, because it wouldn't have happened without you. Thank Mayor Tiedemann for coming to the awards gala yesterday and giving out the Best to Show Award. It was very gratifying also to see some youth awards. We had youth that made films. One, a six-year-old girl from Albany, and a high school student. They both won in their categories. So, the future is bright for more films coming from Albanians. So, anyway, thank you for your support, and we're looking forward to the 14th Annual next year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and thank you for all the work at the Film Fest. Anyone else? None? Anyone in the room? Seeing none, we will move right along to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. They will not receive other discussion unless otherwise pulled by a member of Council or a member of the public. Passing the consent calendar means we are approving the staff recommendation. Are there any items that a council member would like to pull for separate discussion? Seeing none, are there any items that any member of the public would like to make separate comment on? Seeing none, I will look for a motion to approve the consent.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. City Clerk, can we please call the roll?
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Motion.
Thank you. That brings us to our presentations. Our first presentation will be Honor Policing Commission's Proposed Work Plan.
Good evening, Council. This report introduced the work plan as developed by the newly-established Policing Commission. The work plan outlines the area that the Policing Commission will focus on during their term, 2023 to 2024. We have the Vice Chair of Policing Commission, Greg Downs, here tonight to present the work plan.
All right, council members and mayor, thank you so much for having us. And as you know, the Council created the Policing Commission. We began to meet earlier this year in order to formulate a work plan, formulated it and submitted it to Council, and that's what you have in front of you in hopes that we'll then be able to start to carry out the work plan over the remainder of our term. So, as you recall, we're coming up out of cycle because of the time of our creation. In discussing, in our meetings, we discussed amongst ourselves and with some questions for staff, some of the different things that we wanted to prioritize. Primarily, we looked to the Enabling Act that Council had passed, and also aimed to give you a sense of some of the things that we thought we wanted to prioritize within that, so that you could see the, you know, the area, the thought that we were doing about places that we want to focus on, and also to receive from you other suggestions, you know, if there are things that Council would like for the Commission to focus on that's not included here. You can see it's divided into four pieces. The first is the regular reports. You know, here, I think we wrestled with whether we should try and specify exactly how often each one, but because, you know, for many of us, we're still learning the kinds of data that is available on each of these, and also how often the police and staff can actually update it. We didn't want to lock it in. But the, you know, prioritizing these pieces of data, we would seek regular feedback, updates on for ourselves and for the public. Recurring action items, you know, some of which simply carry out the Enabling legislation, including receive and provide recommendations on complaints as provided for, convey questions from the public to the department's representative, report to City Council on issues, make policy recommendations. And then the briefings are things that we might imagine, you know, we need a start of the term briefing on. And so, rather than to, you know, some of these, we might want more frequent updates as they go along, but you know, an initial briefing on some of the aspects of history, of some of the policies, history of some of the different pieces of the department's forces. And then one-time action item, as it says on the back, is to determine for ourselves after discernment some of the things we, qualifications and qualities that we would prioritize in a potential consultant if there is a complaint that rises to the point of hiring one. These would simply be recommendations to Council. We recognize Council makes the decision, but we thought it would be useful to present to you all our sense of some of the qualities that we would prioritize, to be able to bring that to you all for your feedback. And as it says, this is an overarching work plan, and that we would be looking then to build agenda items out for each meeting. So, I'm glad to, you know, taking, I'm the Vice Chair of the Commission, not the Chair, but I'm glad to take any questions if you'd like, or to sit down if you'd like for me to do that.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Let's see if we have any questions for you before you sit down. Any questions? Seeing none, we will go to public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No.
Okay, we'll bring it back to Council for discussion. Anyone want to start us off?
All right, well, I will start. I'm enthused. Thank the Commission for doing the work and putting together the work plan, potentially along with staff. I guess actually I do have a question that pops to mind now. On the regular reports, the thought that those would happen every meeting or on some sort, yeah, sorry about that. I apologize. Slow on that.
We like to make people sit down and then come back. Yeah, exactly. We want people to get their steps in at council meetings.
So, I think the question to make sure I heard it right is on the regular reports, do we have a sense that this would be every meeting? I would guess that that would be more frequent than either would be necessary or possible in some cases. So, I think we are looking to explore with staff and with the, you know, both city civilian staff and with the police staffing, you know, A, sort of their own collection mechanisms, you know, many of which we're just starting to find out, and B, the kind of timeframe that allows for a, you know, a sense of change. So, I can imagine as one person, you know, some of them that I would say are easy to imagine wanting as regular as possible, and others that, you know, say a quarterly as we suggest, or every, or twice a year semi-annually could well work.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions while our Vice Chair is up here?
I should say this passed unanimously. I should have been clear. I believe that's correct. We have fellow Commissioners that we pass this unanimously.
Thank you.
That's an accomplishment.
Well, we have good Commission members, so that's the accomplishment.
Any other comments or questions?
I will just comment that to the extent that it has a budget on here in terms of briefings, I know I had some confusion around that originally, you know, there were statements about how much the budget had increased over time. And there's a distinction between budget and expenditure, which is, you know, one of the things, my not having a financial background, I've learned since I've been on here. And so, I would just ask the Commission to be cognizant of that distinction. So, you know, there were statements that the budget had gone up 70% or something like that, and in fact, the budget had not gone up that much. Spending did go up, but that was because there were a lot of positions that were unfilled, which is not a good situation from my perspective, because when people are overworked, they tend to, more likely to make mistakes. So, yeah, that would be my one note. And then for staff, because there is seven regular reports here, definitely, if you get a desire for reports more frequently, then really seems workable, please bring it back to the Council, so we can have a conversation around that, because we're kind of leaving it to the Commission's discretion at this point. Well, at least, I'm inclined to do that at this point, see how it works out.
Any further comment?
I just want to extend my praises to all the folks on the Policing Commission. I know just from watching the Commission meetings that it definitely is no easy task to try to work on developing a work plan for a newly-established Commission, especially around topics that's sensitive and that's directly interconnected with our community. So, you know, my biggest extension of appreciation to all the folks on the Commission for doing the hard work, the initial hard work. I can imagine there's going to be plenty come forward, and I think that speaks highly of your commitment to service to our community.
I'll echo those comments and say we much appreciate the work and that this is a, I think in many ways, this was a harder work plan to put together than our other committees, because we don't have another committee or commission that's exactly like this one, and starting it and putting together the first work plan is always going to be the hardest. So, I very much appreciate the work that went into this and the cognizance of both, you know, what the purpose was in enabling, and also the cognizance of figuring it out as it goes along about what works best for everybody involved. And I think that speaks well to the people we have on there, and that it was unanimous is great. A real badge that goes a long way for us, I think. With that, unless there's any other discussion, I'll look for a motion.
I move approval of the Policing Commission work plan as presented.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. City Clerk, can we please have the roll?
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
And Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. That leads us to our second presentation, which is the end of year review for fiscal year 2022, '23.
Good evening. I do have a few slides to put together to go along with the staff report that was submitted. The overall presentation and staff report are based on numbers at the time the information was polled. Any required adjusting entries found by either staff or auditors may shift numbers. So, this report that was submitted and the slide- So this report that was submitted and the slides represent data for a point in time. Since completion of the report, it has been discovered that revenues and expenses for the storm drain and sewer activities were not carried properly into the workbook that was being used. This has been corrected for future reporting workbooks. Storm drain and sewer funds utilize special revenues from taxes and fees to cover program costs. So with that in mind, proper analysis will need to be completed by staff to determine the final impact this update will have on the general fund operating budget. So an overview of the presentation that was prepared ahead of that. Fiscal year 22, '23 concluded with a surplus of $1.819 million in the general fund. This was a year that had a projected deficit in the approved budget. Overall, departments stayed under budgeted expenses for the fiscal year. There was a savings of about $546,000, so under but fairly close to projections. The biggest city costs were salaries and benefits. This is as expected and as has been the trend in prior years. Salaries were under in departments that had vacancies. Our police and fire departments are the two departments with the highest recurring vacancies. And I did also want to point out overtime does count towards the salary numbers. So any department that needs to utilize overtime for staffing shortages, that does count towards the budgeted numbers. Departments did work to stay under expenses outside of salaries as well. Finance staff is keeping regular communication to inform departments of current budget numbers as the year goes on so that careful spending can continue. So the next couple of slides, I just want to discuss some revenues I thought were a good idea to point out. Revenues overall exceeded expectations by $3.789 million. This fact was the biggest reason why we ended the year with a surplus. Again, expenses were fairly close to projections and we were also budgeted a deficit. So this is what made that difference. Property tax and sales tax remain the strongest revenue streams for the city. Property tax revenues increased during the COVID-19 pandemic. Homes were sold. Property was then taxed at the new assessed value during that sale. So that increased our revenue stream there. Improvements to homes also increased during the COVID-19 lockdown. Certain improvements can also lead to an increase in assessed value. Sales and use taxes have remained a steady stream of income for the city. This was an area that was expected to decline during the COVID-19 lockdown, but that has not occurred and it again has just remained fairly strong. The Community Development Department showed strong revenue performance for construction permits. This area earned 168% of the projected revenue for fiscal year 22, '23. Construction permit demand was also an area that increased during COVID-19 lockdown and again, an area that was expected to slow after recovering reopening, but it has continued to bring in increasing revenue throughout the years. The budget for this revenue remains at the pre-pandemic levels to avoid anticipating a revenue that might not be permanent. It is currently and it has been $380,000 a year since 2020, fiscal year 2019, 2020. And as you can see, it's, has steadily gone up, but it does remain at that budget because it's hard to anticipate. The Recreation and Community Services Department had the largest surge in revenues over what had been budgeted. This was our department within the city that was hit the hardest during the lockdown. So it was good to see this recovery in these areas. The state lifting the COVID-19 state of emergency on February 28th, 2023 allowed the department to fully open, which made way for the public to utilize services. Demand for services were strong in quarter one, but a larger-than-expected continuation of that demand were present in both quarter three and quarter four. Courses, leases, especially camps, brought in much more revenue than was anticipated for this department. So the revenues previously were budgeted with caution in fiscal year 2022, '23 due to the uncertainty of what the recovery would look like after the pandemic. The revenues for the current budget year, fiscal year 2023, '24, were projected to be higher than what was previously budgeted, but not at the level that was recognized in fiscal year 2022, '23. So just an example, recreation classes brought in $175,000. It was budgeted at 40 for fiscal year 22, '23. It's now projected at 150 for the current year. So we're responding to the increase in the demand that's been observed, but still considering revenues may not show as strong a showing. So in summary, departments were able to stay under budget. Revenues were strong. Both factors combined ended the year in a surplus. Staff recommends any reappropriations of the surplus, wait until the audit is finalized. The auditors are here this week. Today was their first day. They will be here through Friday and staff is responding to any requests that we receive to them as timely as we're able to. And with that, I'll open up for any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any questions from Council?
I just have a quick question on the revenues. I was noticing all of the different types of the pie. Noticed one that said "all other." Could you give me some examples of what is factored into that all other category?
Yes, so all other, it's pretty much a catch-all of anything that's not in there. One would be service charges, so the recreation revenue is in that other category. I believe business licenses do fall in that category as well. Those are two major ones that I can think of and some other smaller revenues.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation and the good news. The agreement with UC Berkeley has it contributing $400,000 a year, I believe, to the general fund, if I have that correctly, and $200,000 for capital. I don't know if the first payment came in under the, this fiscal year or not.
I believe we received that in August, yeah.
Okay, okay, so that's not reflected in this. So that's, yep, our positive news on top of that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, any questions? I'll ask on the property tax. You mentioned that it's been increasing due to home sales. Do we see that continuing pace? More home sales in the future? Have we seen, I don't know if you have this on hand. I know we have a Realtor on hand. But also if that was faster at one point or has slowed down at all? I know interest rates have gone up, so I'm curious whether that has affected this and if we can, if this is the biggest part of what made up our surplus. I'm asking so that we can know if, you know, we can't plan to have a surplus, but how much we can plan for this to keep growing.
Good question. Property transfer tax is the tax on the specific home sale and that's actually not in the property tax portion. So I would need to do more analysis, but my estimation would be if the property taxes we're receiving are based on the value of the homes and not really rely on the sales, then it could be considered a more steady, even if sales go down.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hanson, I don't know if you have anything to add there?
We don't have a crystal ball, that's all.
That seemed like a very prepared answer for this sort of question. Other question?
Well, yeah, it occurs to me that the property transfer tax can be used potentially as a metric with regard to looking forward on how much the property tax is going to go up or not go up in the sense that, well, I mean, I guess you can just use sales or value of sales or whatever. So I don't know if sales are down, I guess is the question. And if they are down, how much they're down?
Well, it...
And I'm not expecting you to answer.
Inventory too. Inventory and, you know, with, you know, the interest rate continuing to grow. We, it's a weird market out there right now. I'll just tell you that. Everybody's saying the same thing. It's kind of all over the place and Albany is still very popular, but we also have very low inventory a lot of times, so.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I understood your question maybe incorrectly as will property taxes, not including the transfer tax, likely continue to go up? I mean, they're not probably going to go down unless we have a recession and people reassess. But, but was your question about, you know, are they likely to continue to go up? Do we still, are we seeing turnover?
Yeah, generally.
Okay.
Any other questions from Council?
Just comment, so.
Then we'll wait for that.
Actually, I have a question. The property tax, that's the city's portion of the 1%?
Yes.
Ad valorem? Okay, thank you. Which is a tiny, tiny portion of the 1%, right? I don't know how much it is, but it's small, but large for us.
With that, we'll take it to public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item? Anyone in the room? Not online, we'll bring it back for discussion. Anyone want to start us off?
Yeah, I was, wasn't sure if it was a question or a comment, but I think it is a comment. I think, you know, understanding the assessment and what change that occurred, what that creates for in terms of revenue is important to understand. I think for me, it's historically understanding how many of the houses that have been sold recently are actually houses that were super under-assessed or were paying way less versus how many houses are being sold over the last few quarters or last few years that were already pretty close because they had sold maybe in the last 10 years or something. Because as our inventory of houses that haven't exchanged hands drops, you know, that haven't been like decades since they sold, you know, our increase in our assessment, we're always going to get a little bit more of increase, but we're not going to get these giant bumps. And so I don't know if that's a Realtor question or if that's an assessor's question or if it's a data analysis question. I'll look to my Council members who like to do that, but I, I do worry that we are getting... I mean, anecdotally, on my street, many of the longtime people who've been on my street have sold. And so that led to a bump over the last five, eight years. But that also means if those houses ever sell again, there'll be a bump, but it won't be nearly as big of a bump. And so I am cautious about when we're talking about how much more revenue we'll get from this assessment, but agree that at least we know we can get, as long as there's not a big dip in the market value, it'll be a steady stream. Just mean, I'm just more concerned about the rate of increase.
And I'll just say to that, you know, it's pretty secular, if you think about it. So some of the, I mean, me growing up here, seemed like all the old families on the block, you know, either retired to Vacaville back then or sold. So I think, you know, you're still going to see, there's still going to be the old inventory as well as the new inventory that comes along. But if you want to see any of that data later, I can, I can show it to you.
Yeah, I'll just remark that it, that over the last, so over the last four to five years, the surplus has been, you know, pretty substantial, running around 5%. Much more than that in one of the years. But the last four years, including 2020, so this fiscal year 2020, so not, not a... The projection wasn't made knowing the pandemic was coming. Starting that year, the deficits have been projected to be, on average, around 7%. And those, you know, those haven't materialized because the revenues come in so high of projection. Before that, there were surpluses before that and, you know, things were a little bit better than projected, but not as dramatically different. So it's, it's, it's good news to have, but to the extent that having projections that are more accurate for planning purposes is helpful so that we don't overtax, which I know is maybe a strange thing to say in Albany, but certainly something I'm sensitive to. So, and I know we need, we need the revenue for pension liability and things like that. So I'm enthused that we have this surplus to help out with our capital funding reserves and our pension liability. But the spread has been about 15% between a projection and what's coming in actual, which is larger than it was the previous four years. I'm not in the business making projections, so one could say that's really good projection or maybe, you know, not as great a projection, but I just wanted to recognize that going forward.
I will briefly say, I'd agree with Councilmember Jordan. You know, it's always good to have, be conservative and not rely on having a surplus, but it's also good to plan for what we're actually going to get. And, you know, I recognize that some of that may be very difficult, especially given that, you know, parts of that are due to unfilled positions always. So we sort of, to some extent, always have to budget for spending a little bit more than we know we're going to spend. But if we can always get that amount, you know, the amount's a little closer, that's always a good thing, especially if we're headed into a time where we absolutely know that we have some expenses coming up. It's good to know of exactly how much we have to panic and start planning now for how to fill that and how much we can say, well, we do have to fill that, but we have some advantages to doing so. So that's a good thing to keep in mind. But, you know, the takeaway from all of this for anyone listening is we are in good shape, I think. We've talked a lot about the edges of this, but the headline is the city's doing pretty well and our revenues have remained remarkably stable through the pandemic. I think that was one of the big things that to take away from the past updates we've gotten on this in the past several years is, you know, we, like everyone else, were more conservative during that time and for us, it didn't materialize. For other cities, it did and they had a more difficult time figuring that out. So we are lucky in that respect and hopefully that continues and hopefully property tax keeps continuing. And the Vice Mayor put sort of what I was trying to get at better than I could of, you know, it partly depends how much we have places that were assessed 20 years ago and haven't been assessed since then are coming on the market. But we, we will see how that all works out. Any other comments from Council?
I just want to thank staff and for all of your hard work on this and appreciate, look forward to getting the audit finalized and everything, so thank you.
Yeah, I think the portfolio approach to revenues very much proved itself out. And I guess it would be helpful of me to have some, maybe more education on, you know, which of the revenue sources is more volatile and less. I mean, the property transfer tax is usually looked at as being particularly volatile to market conditions. Sales tax, not as much, so it might even be useful to do, it's possible to do some sort of Monte Carlo analysis, you know, putting return and spread that's reasonable on each one and to develop an understanding of our risk or exposure to revenues suddenly not going up. Because seeing these surpluses year after year, it is tempting to get lulled into complacency. So I think any analysis that can be done to push back on that is helpful for me anyway. And I will note, to my understanding, it's the expenditure side, the plan has been pretty spot-on, as you said. I mean, there's usually a little bit of savings, but it's really been on the revenue side that the discrepancy has increased and decreased through time.
Any further comment? If not, thank you very much for the work, we really appreciate it. And we will move on to our next item, which is new business, 11-1, which is placing a charter amendment measure on the November 5th, 2024 ballot relating salaries for the mayor and Councilmembers. And this is myself and Councilmember Jordan. So I can introduce this and then turn it over to you to talk about some of it and then I'll talk about more of it. This is a measure that Councilmember Jordan and I have wanted to work on for this Council for a long time, something we talked about, I think, even before we were elected. And it is recognizing that the Council has been, its pay has not really changed in a very long time and that amount has not been fixed to inflation even. So recognizing that and recognizing a couple different goals around equity and paying for the work people are doing, we want to bring this and have discussion of it with the understanding that any action we take now is not final action. This is because we are a charter city and this is included in our charter. It would have to go to the voters for approval if we choose to pursue that. And I'll turn it over to Councilmember Jordan to talk about some bits of this.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to recognize Charterview Committee Member Schneider for pointing out that the body had worked on this. for pointing out that the body had worked on this, even though a report did not come up to the council from it. And in her absence, I asked another former Charter Review Committee member, Chomsky, Harry Chomsky, to apprise me of the, the agenda attachments in this regard. And so I went through those attachments and they located one peer-reviewed journal article from the Stanford Law Review that, that was on this topic of council compensation. And it described essentially two competing theories of council compensation. One is that it should be a public service. And then the other is that council members should be compensated reasonably for the, for the work that they do. They didn't define reasonably. In terms of what the effects are of this, the, the article didn't purport to resolve it because there isn't consensus and research necessarily on the different effects of those, those two models. They presented pros and cons of each. To the extent there was a, what appeared to be definitive statement based on research, so, that I found, I'll read the following. It said, "While few go into government work to get rich, common sense, as well as the political science research on the issue, tells us that pay is a consideration for at least some people in making the decision to enter or continue with government service. Without adequate compensation, legislative office simply is not an option for some who would otherwise be interested in serving, but who cannot afford to." And so that had citations, so I went and looked at the citations expecting to, to see a lot of data crunching and whatnot. Unfortunately, one of them seemed to be, I would say, somewhat conjecture or that common sense, as was stated in that, which isn't entirely satisfying. The other one was a study regarding the choice of state legislators, whether to continue an office or not, and the compensation had a substantial impact on that, but it's not necessarily really relevant to a city like Albany. So as a result of that, I decided to go to publicly available data, as Vice Mayor noted. I tend to be a data hound, so there's tons of data out there. And so I controlled for, you know, looking across all 482 California cities, controlling for population, median household income, average household size, cities that have rotating mayors, cities that have five council members and that elect at large. So selecting down, down, down. There are six other cities in California that are similar to Albany in all of those ways or actually equal to in terms of council size and having a rotating mayor. And they are in a variety of counties, Los Angeles, Nevada, San Mateo, San Joaquin. And from that, so the six of those plus Albany is seven, a set of seven. Albany was tied for lowest pay of all of them, interestingly. And so what does that matter? Well, this century, there's been 12 elections for council in Albany. Two of them have been uncontested. The other cities that had similarly low pay, had a similar rate of uncontested elections. The cities that had the highest pay had no uncontested elections. So I would need to build the data setup larger, probably, and look across all the cities. This was just a sample to figure out if that was significant or not. But that was interesting because at the time that I was on the Charter Review Committee and we undertook reviewing election methods and alternatives, the, the one criteria that the criterion, that the school board asked us to look at was, do any election methods tend to elicit more candidates than other methods? Because there's a perennial even greater lack of candidates for Board of Education than for council. And so the, the Charter Review Committee included that as one of the six criteria. And to the extent that data was available at the time that could be analyzed, there was no differences found between different at-large election methods and the number of candidates, which, you know, was not a satisfying answer, but that was the answer. Whereas this, so far, seems to be quite the opposite, where there does seem to, seem to be a correlation between compensation or anti-correlation between compensation and the share of elections that are uncontested. So from that extent, I would say there, you know, to the extent that uncontested elections are not healthy for democracy or for governance, there is some argument to be made for increased compensation.
Great. Thank you for doing all of that research. I'll say a little bit more of, you know, one of the reasons behind this is increasing the pool of candidates, making this more attractive and, and make it more possible. I think another argument for this is from the idea of fairness of, this is a rarefied job. It's an honor to do. I'm honored to do it. But it is, and it's a strange job in that none of us have a real supervisor who's, you know, honest to do specific tasks. But it is a job and it requires a good deal of work. And I think it's important to understand, A, not all of that work happens up here and where people can see it. I'd say a huge amount of it actually happens behind the scenes. And that doing that is, is asking people to do a lot of things. And, and by a lot of things, I mean, not just a big time commitment, but also fulfill a lot of different roles. And I'm not trying to conflate what we do on council with what the staff does, is that we do have different roles, but even just acknowledging that staff is doing a lot of the, you know, drafting of staff reports, a lot of the legwork on things, implementing. Council still has to, at the bare minimum, be prepared for these meetings by reading materials, by doing some research, by coming to these, which can, we've been pretty good about making them short, but they can last a very long time. As well as keeping track of their email with updates around town, with their constituents and responding to those constituents. To say nothing of the other things that are required to really, I think, do this job to the maximum extent possible and be a good advocate for the people who elected us and be taking the opportunities that one needs to of researching new policies and bringing those prepared for council to discuss, of meeting with constituents and responding to their specific concerns, of representing Albany at regional commissions as well as events around town and a variety of other events, and saying yes to things that allow Albany to have a bigger voice in a lot of things. These are all really important parts of being a council member and it doesn't, it's not meet. You know, we reference in this memorandum that it can take 20 hours a week. I know that's definitely been true of me while I've been mayor. There's a lot of work to be done of responding to people, of representing and talking to staff and coordinating. I'd say it can, it can be very variable and 20 hours is not the, I would not say the average, but I would say probably something around 10 might be, depending on the week. It can be, it can very, very much change. So somewhere between 10 and 20, which means this is somewhere between a quarter and a halftime job. And I think it's, paying for that means we value that work. We value the work that people do in representing the city and the people who live in the city. And it's a valuable job. We need people to do it because we need democratic representation. I'll have more to say on that when we get to discussion, if we have questions, but I'll try and cut myself off there. To talk about the practicalities here, the approach suggested is trying to take some cues from the city of Berkeley, which went through this process just a couple of years ago. They increased the salary much more than us because that is expected to be a full-time job. But the approach was to peg the amount paid to a percentage of the AMI or the area median income for a family of three. This has the benefit of being inflation-proof, of we are pegging it to a measure that moves with inflation necessarily. And so we'll, we'll change with that and we won't have to update it every time. I'll say, I, I think the, the amount we've suggested is a good one. If we want to discuss a different amount, I, I don't think it's the only one that could be possible. But, you know, something that recognizes that this is not a full job, a full-time job, but we want it to be compensated because it is work. And I'll say lastly of, I think that's important to note of, you know, we're not expecting any of us to quit our day job. We acknowledge that, that, that most of us have to have that. But this is an acknowledgement that we don't want to be cutting into everyone's time with their family or going about their life otherwise. This, this should not be something that you can only do if you have spare time or the resources to do so. It should be something that is accessible to anyone and that you can do in the time that is allotted for doing work. This should not take away from spending time with your kids or doing anything else or take away from your sleep, really. And I know that's how it sometimes feels right now. So with that, we will open to council questions. Any questions from anyone on council?
In any of the research that was done, were there any questions? Any research done on potential candidates and reasons why they, they stated they didn't run? And then this is, I get that it's highly unlikely that this exists, but I, that's a question before we get to comments, so.
Wait, I'm sorry, is the, the question?
So in the research that you found, so they talked about, you know, did any of them actually do surveys of what might convince someone to run? So for instance, not only salary, but there's also the cost of what it actually means to try and run. And I will tell you that I got very divergent numbers on what that could be when I ran. And so I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to get more information to understand how much of it is salary, how much of it is just the time and the effort and the cost of actually running for office, so.
Yeah, so I didn't run into research on that. Could certainly look into it. Yeah, I didn't run into research on that. And to the extent that, that the selection of cities, the query of cities that I did resulted in cities of same population, same number of households, generally same household income. It would control for that to some extent. I didn't control for size of electorate. So Albany does have a extraordinarily high turnout. So its electorate tends to be larger than other cities of its size, which can potentially change the cost of, of campaigning. But yeah, that's about as far as I can go with that.
I'll just add a note that I think the question of how this relates to the cost of actually running is a good one, and that was actually one of the first things that Councilmember Jordan said when we were working on this, was if we do this, we also have to talk about how we fund elections and public finance of those because we don't want to make it more attractive to spend more money on the election in order to get a job that pays better. I think that's a good note. We didn't quite get there yet, partly because we're not sure if we're going to pursue this, but it's something that we should be thinking about in the future and that other, other cities have implemented. Again, you know, Berkeley has implemented public funding of their elections to some extent. Are there no other questions? We will go to public comment. Do we have anyone in the room?
Before you turn on the clock, Preston, we're having kind of a hard time hearing you. If you could maybe get closer to your mic?
Oh, just to get right, right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I'm Peggy McQuade and I recently completed eight years of service on the city council, including having the honor of being mayor for two years. This proposal to increase council compensation to nearly $40,000 per year is misguided, unnecessary, and irresponsible. However, I could support the idea of a ballot measure updating the charter to include increases to adjust for inflation based on the CPI. This change could be drafted by the city attorney and not take up your time. The city charter defines the council as the legislative body of the city. It is the role of the city council to set policy. Every two years, a strategic plan is developed as a roadmap for the city. This plan is created in concert with the budget and the capital improvement plan. In Albany's council, city manager form of government, the council sets the policy, policy goals and staff under the direction of the city manager implements these policies. It is not the role of the city council, either individually or as a whole, to micromanage the work of staff. You are not part-time workers and the suggestion that you are demonstrates a concerning lack of understanding of your role as an elected official. There are many people who have time to serve in the role of a council member as is currently defined, but would not be able to take on a halftime job, which is what you're proposing. There's always been flexibility in the time put in by individual council members. There's an ebb and flow to the amount of time one may put in, but assuming all council members will work 20 hours per week is simply wrong. Setting this as the expectation will lead to a host of problems. There is simply not 100 hours of work appropriate for council members to do every week. Albany was fortunate to have an excellent Charter Review Committee, which recently conducted a thorough study of increasing council compensation and they could not make any findings to support this idea. In January 2024, the council monthly compensation will be raised to $950. This is a sizable increase from the current $300. Recommending an additional large increase prior to any evaluation of this change is irresponsible. The proposal of $3,327 per month is more than the compensation in a city with a population of over 250 people, as set under SB 329. You recently held a robust discussion on infrastructure needs in the city, most of which will require an additional funding source. So where does the nearly $200,000 per year for this plan come from? The optics of current council members advocating for a large increase in compensation are quite frankly terrible. If any significant changes are to be made, I urge you to set the implementation date for January 2031. This ensures none of you will benefit from these actions. May I finish one more sentence? I hope you will recognize this proposal as unnecessary and inappropriate and instead direct staff to draft language for a ballot measure to update the charter to include increases to compensation based on the CPI. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the room?
Good evening, council. Thank you. My name is Doug Donaldson, a longtime Albany resident and a member various times at the Planning and Zoning Commission. In fact, I was first appointed planning and zoning something around 2002, 2003 by Alan Maris. And what he told me at the time, he said, "Doug, sometimes the P&amp;Z workload is bigger than the council member's workload." And I think, I guess that is probably true. And the other thing about planning and zoning is that it's a, it's, it's a, an agency with legal responsibilities and the government code and the city charter. It's not just an advisory committee. It's a committee that really acts on behalf of the city. And it did take a lot of time. I've probably served on and off probably 15 years since I was first appointed on P&amp;Z. And so I really do know how much work it takes. And I guess I'm here tonight kind of in solidarity with the current and future members of planning and zoning to say, if you're, if you're looking at salaried positions for, for council members, I don't think you should leave out planning and zoning commissioners. It, it is a lot of work. It has legal responsibilities. And, and I think that, that that should be considered too. That being said, I'm not very excited about the idea of, of going the salaries the way that's been proposed. The, the staff report looks at examples of Berkeley and Alameda. Well, Berkeley has six times the population of Albany. And, you know, your, your job mostly as council people is policymaking. You have a well-paid professional staff that does the day-to-day work of operating the city all through it. You're policy people, really. And I, I think the way we've been doing over the years with a modest compensation for council members is, is, is just fine. It works appropriate, is, is appropriate. The, I know the, your, the, the salaries are going to go up apparently because of the law that's recently been passed. Peggy just said up to approximately nine, over $900 a year. Well, it occurs to me, that's about one-sixth of what Berkeley is paying its council members based on your numbers in the staff report. So maybe that's appropriate level of compensation for the Albany City Council based on raw population numbers, so. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Any more in the room? Any more in the room?
Good evening. My name is Ellen Davis Sapata, and I am a longtime resident of Albany. And I probably can't talk you out of putting this on the ballot, but I can certainly tell you that I'm actually aghast at this proposal. Normally, I'm all for, for paying employees good salaries, but I am also a volunteer at heart, and I know the difference. After serving as the elected city treasurer of, here in Albany, from 1976 to 1980, I went on to work in various cities, at a couple of different cities as a city clerk once, also attending hundreds of council mem, council meetings and working with many city councils and mayors. I have seen many levels of work ethic in the cities. This proposal would have the city paying an enormous salary to part-time politicians, which is not a bad word, but politicians, who are, and you're not employees. As we know, the city of Albany historically paid council members a nominal sum. And in 76 to 80, and then before, council members got $5 a meeting, no benefits. And now, until recently, you currently now get a salary, healthcare benefits, and even life insurance, which many of us don't have. This, this amounts to a pretty good sum. The pro, proposal would pay an enormous salary to volunteer council members regardless of how much time you spend on cities' business, political business. I know the time varies for various reasons. Some have full-time jobs and don't have the time others do to serve on committees and commissions. Still, they would receive the same raise along with their salaries. Additionally, you are normally paid for serving on the committee, regional committees, if I'm not mistaken. That's true? Yeah?
Please finish your comment, and we can respond to questions at the end.
Some council members spend a lot of time reading council packets and researching issues. Others do not and come unprepared. That, that I've seen many times. They all receive the same raise. Perhaps the city, oh, and so it's really your choice how much time you spend. Is it, and some council members spend a lot of time and some don't. In spite of the, the rosy budget report tonight, this proposal would take a lot of money from programs that, that could keep, perhaps help people move into the city who can't afford it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any further in the room? Seeing none, we'll get online.
Hi, my name is Brian Martin, and I wanted to express my support for the city considering the raises for city council members. When I first learned some years ago that city council members were only paid $300 a month, I couldn't believe it. I, I do hear the concerns that some people have voiced that there's, there's no, that people could work all, a, a range of hours and still get the same pay. So I don't know how other cities handle that, that have more substantial pay for their city council members. But I think having, having the city already pay for, what is it, election registration fees, I think that helps get more people to consider running. And I think it would get even more people to consider running, as was pointed out earlier in this session, if there was a more substantial pay, not necessarily, it's far from a get-rich-quick thing, you know? Even that amount of money in the Bay Area is, is really not that substantial. But the, I think it, from what I've seen of previous city councils, not, not necessarily this one, is that, which, which benefits from the first election that had no fee to enter it, is that prior city council members, many of them were retired, as best I could tell. And I think that, you know, that you shouldn't have to be a quote-unquote "person of leisure", you know, to be able to run and to do the job. I think that there should be some fair compensation there. You know, what formula actually goes into that and how it actually looks in the end, I would encourage the, the city council to, to flesh out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Clay Larson. I sent an email to the council this morning summarizing my objections to the proposal by council members Tatum and Jordan, and a proposal for an 11 to 12-fold increase in the salaries paid to council members. There were several other emails which presented arguments very similar to mine, so I won't repeat all that, but there was one significant difference. Most of the other emails, and certainly Tatum and, and Jordan seem to presume that as a result of passage of SB 329, an increase in council salaries to $950 a month will happen automatically in January of next year. I don't think this is correct. Section 2.08 of the Charter states in principle part that each member of the city council shall receive an amount of $300 per month, and then notes that this is a salary authorized for general law cities by the government code, section 36516, parentheses A. I don't think the second half of that sentence should be interpreted as what in effect would be an escalator clause in the charter that automatically provided for changes in salaries based on changes in the maximum salaries listed in the government code. I take the reference in the government code here as intended only to describe the basis for the $300 a month figure at the time of the amendment of the charter. You know, interpreting laws, in this case, interpreting a charter, one should first look at the plain English language meaning. The charter clearly and simply states that each council member shall receive $300 a month. If you want to change that salary, we'll need to change the charter. The, the state constitution requires adoption of any amendment to a city charter requires the majority of the, of election contacts with the, with the majority of the voters voting in favor of the change. I think this is all the correct interpretation of charter language. I would encourage the city council to get an opinion from the city attorney as to whether SB 329 automatically increases the salary of Albany city council members in January 2024. I, I also listened to some of the comments. I, I think Preston Jordan's summary of his research was, I, I read research all the time, and it was, it was one thing. I mean, it's, it's, it's difficult from the diocese to, to, to provide actual details of research. I think he may be confusing correlation with causation. I, I also, at some other point, want to question whether, whether it's appropriate for, one, or in this case, two members of the, of the council to send memos. Doug Donaldson referred to it as a staff report. It's not a staff report. It's a memo through, where two council members are trying to reach some concurrence by sending information to the other, to all five council members. At some point, we should discuss whether that's reasonable.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, this is Marjorie Marks. I am calling tonight to ask you to either vote no or vote to table the motion tonight to put this charter amendment on the ballot. At the beginning of the meeting, one of the two authors said, you know, we have been talking about this for a really long time. Well, maybe you have been talking about it, but we haven't. And I, I feel like that's where there's a disconnect here. You know, there needs to be more discussion. It's too premature to put it on the ballot right now. There's a lot of things, you could do a survey, to, you know, do some education, do whatever, but just to move and, and look at different ways, the way the compensation could be done. Maybe it could be some kind of set hourly. I, I don't know. There's probably a million ways to look at this, other than the way that, the specific way, and I know you did all of your studies, but maybe the citizens would like some input into the way, if you're going to look at the compensation, to how it's looked at. So I, I'm not opposed to looking at it, but I really think it is premature to put it, this on the ballot with no specifics around it and no education to the public. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, before we discuss, there are some questions that I think we can answer. Firstly, to that last comment, you know, this, the, the action here would be directing staff to prepare that measure and also forming council ad hoc committee to help work on that. So this is not the final be-all, end-all of discussion on this. This is, in fact, the first step, which is why we're bringing it so far before that election. So there would be more educational campaigns and, and part of this if the council were to move it forward tonight. Again, this is not a final action. There was a question of can two council members send a memo? I'll note that we originally had this as a staff report because that was the template we were using. City manager rightly pointed out that it's not a staff report. It's a memo. That is the correct form for this sort of thing to take. And as I understand, the Brown Act, two council members discussing something and working on it together happens all the time, and is not, you know, as long as it's not a quorum of members or majority, that is allowed. And that's how some things come before us. I wonder if our city attorney can talk to the question of how SB 3, was it SB 329, applies to the city charter and whether it happens automatically? I know we discussed this before bringing this, and I forgot to mention it when we were talking about the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Our charter is very specific and provides for the amount of compensation for council members' salary as $300, which was listed in the government code section that was referenced. That has been amended effective January 1, and the charter says, or as the same may be amended from time to time. So if I read that language, which has to have purpose and meaning, it is, it would apply effective January 1. The amount would increase from 300 to 950 because that government code section specifically has been amended as of January 1.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. With that, I'll bring it back for council discussion. Does anyone want to start us off?
I just wanted to answer a, a couple of other questions. So a commenter asked if there's pay for the regional bodies that the council members serve on. And there is for some and not for others, and the amount varies from, I don't know, I think the, the lowest amount is 100 and the highest amount is 250, I think, if I recall correctly. I don't know. But there are some that aren't paid, so it, it varies pretty widely. And, yeah, but I don't, that was just the other question I wanted to answer.
I can start us off. I, I have a lot of thoughts on this, obviously, because I wrote about it. Also, one more public comment I want to respond to of the, bringing up the planning and zoning. That is something we talked about in drafting of, yes, if, if, you know, we recognize that that is a lot of work, that they do have real responsibilities, and that they are required to do a whole bunch of different things, and that is something that we talked about of, we should probably look into at some point in the future. So we're not adverse to it. We recognize the work that goes in there. To talk a little about the, a lot of what we have heard, and when we talk about this, it is often colored by the amount that has been paid previously in comparing to general law cities and the general law that we use and things like that. And that is obviously our only comparison point, but I would say that it is a bad comparison point. To me, there's, you can compare it a little bit to minimum wage of, if we're talking about increasing the minimum wage and comparing it to where it has been, we have to understand that where it has been and the way we understand it is colored by it not being updated enough and it being undervalued for a long time. So if we're talking about minimum wage increases and having a massive increase to an amount, we have to take into account that that amount was set deliberately low and has not been updated to keep track with inflation for a very long time. And I would also say that, for whatever reason, there is a knee-jerk negative response in this country to paying our elected officials and paying politicians, especially at the local level. And that has colored it so that they are essentially underpaid most of the time. As I said, I think the purpose here is we are valuing the work that people do, and we think this is an important job. I think it's an incredibly important job. It is how we have representative democracy at our local level and how people get representatives to represent them. And if we think it's an important job, we should value it. And how we show that value, at least in our society as it exists now, is compensating people for it. And that is showing that we'd like them to do it, and we'd like them to prioritize it. So that large increase, I think, is, is not, it comes with the background of it being undervalued for a very long time. And the, you know, the example of our $300 a month, the legislation that just increased that is the first time that has changed since the 80s. And as we all know, inflation has not stopped since the 80s. That amount was, has, so has not been accurate in some time, to say the least, and may not have been a good starting point in the first place because I, as I said, it represents undervaluing the work that goes into it. I'll also say that, you know, there was reference to this being a huge salary. I would push back on that of, this is a percentage of area median income. The area median income around here is high. It is high because this is a very expensive place to live. I know that because it is expensive for me to remain in Albany. I'm just a hair's breadth under severely rent burdened, under the definitions that we use around here. So this, while it may seem on the sticker price that it's a big amount, I would say that it is not as huge as we may think it is because we need to pay everyone more to afford to live around here. It is just incredibly expensive. I'll also mention that you, one of our commentators meant, talked about how a lot of the time in Albany, our representatives have been people who could afford to do this. And I'll say that the council previous to when Councilmember Jordan and I were elected was, majority was folks who were retired and who owned their homes. And that's not to say anything bad about them. I really appreciate all the service they did. But we have an exception on this council now. This is an exception, not the rule. Everyone on here has a full-time job. We have two renters on the council right now. That is not the norm. Three, sorry, excuse me, three. I always forget because you're a realtor. We have three, and that, that is not the rule in Albany. It is the exception, and I would say that is not the rule in any city in the Bay Area. It is, it is, it is hard to have renters on council because it is hard to ask people who have to do a lot to make ends meet, to afford to live in the place that they live in, to take on this extra work and do the job of representing their community without valuing that work and showing it to those people. So I think we have to keep that in mind and not rely that we will get lucky and continue to have lots of renters and people who, you know, frankly, don't have the time but are willing to fit it in. And I will acknowledge my privilege in this aspect of, I don't know how any of you do this with children. I think that is a huge sacrifice to make. Like I mentioned earlier, I want council work, which I think is very important work, to come out of not your time with your children and with your families, and not your time of doing all the important things there, but come out of work time and, and have its own place and not be a compromise that has to be made in order for various groups and various people to sit on this body. If we are asking people to make that compromise, I think we are doing everybody a disservice. I, yeah, I could go on, on this for a long time, but I will end it there and see if I can. I, yeah, I could go on, on this for a long time, but I will end it there and see if anyone else has any discussion.
As, as one of the non-renters, I think, I think back to this election cycle and how the stars aligned for me. 2018, at my job, I went from 40 hours to 20 hours, then back up to 30 hours, but not 40 hours a day. So, in the election cycle, I anticipated being an empty nester. Happened a little faster than we all expected, but I am an empty nester now. And so, I see that these things came into alignment that allows me to put in the 10 to 20 hours a week, to serve on Cal cities, to serve on different, representing the city in different ways. But I also understand that when I was on traffic and safety, it was very difficult for me to make the time to show up once a month, make sure I had childcare, to make sure that our things, and money was much tighter for us then, even though we were homeowners. And I don't know that I am convinced that the proposal in front of us is the right solution. But I think having, I would like to be able to have this conversation, even if we don't get very far on the other parts of the conversation, in the broader context of, I'm hearing multiple things. One is supporting those who are on council, but also making, encouraging others to run. And so, having a discussion about what we can do to further encourage people to run, what we can do to further encourage people to, to serve on council, but frankly, further encourage more people to serve on our committees and commissions. And so, I, I appreciate the comments that have come in, and I've read them closely. And, you know, if we truly want to be a city where we want people to volunteer and we want people to give their time, perhaps we can't compensate all of our committee and commission members, but we could perhaps look at programs that offset costs for childcare, so that younger families can feel that they can serve and know that their children are watched over. I think there, I guess what I'm saying is, I want to see a broader picture of the things that we as a council can be doing, before I move forward on saying that, you know, in two years, or in four years, or in six years, the council will be paid 30% of AMI. Because I feel like maybe we'll get to that point, and we'll say that is the right solution. But I want to understand all the other things that we're doing at the same time. That's, I was gonna wait to be last, but it wasn't sure if anyone else was gonna say Because I, I went in knowing, well, it was a little rude when I, a little bit jarring when I found out it was $300 a month. But I went in knowing that it was a voluntary position. And so, I would absolutely support, at a minimum, it being, going into effect two years from the election, which would mean I would not benefit unless I were reelected, right? I'm not sure that I can quite go as far out as 2030, but I think that was what was done when the $300 was passed. It didn't go into effect until two years later. And so, that meant that no council member benefited unless they were reelected on that ballot, or they were reelected on the following ballot. Sorry, Robin.
Oh, no worries. I think you and I can give a one-two punch here. I'll admit that when I first seen this on the agenda, I had some hesitancies and reluctance. And I could say that with, you know, with the full disclosure that I am a renter and I also identify as very, very low income. To put it into context, something I don't like sharing, but I think is important, worth noting, the maximum amount that I can get paid at UC Berkeley as a graduate researcher or teaching assistant is $34,000. My rent easily tops that. That's just rent. I have a one-year-old son that has significant medical needs and childcare needs. Childcare is out the roof. That doesn't even factor in just typical, basic need. And that's if I'm lucky enough to get access to some of the food pantry that we have onsite at UC Village. Put that out there for full understanding that I'm trying to look at this from a very balanced point of view and perspective, that I too did not come in here with the lure of, oh, this is, $300 a month is gonna line my pockets, because it certainly does, especially after deduction, for the coverages that were mentioned, health, dental, vision, so forth. But I can say that made a significant difference in what I would be paying UC Berkeley. The academic machine that exploits and takes advantage of their, the backbones of their research prestige. In short, if I were to elect to have medical coverage with UC Berkeley for my children, my children alone, it'd be over $6,000 a year, just the academic year, fall, spring, doesn't include summer. If I wanted childcare through UC Berkeley, that's easily over $2,300 a month, because their waitlist for subsidized childcare is out the roof. So, I wanna help lay it out and give perspective there, like that I am very, very appreciative of what is already offered. But that doesn't mean that it even comes close to what needs to be offered in terms of compensation. Am I in agreement, this is why I say I have reluctance and hesitancy. Am I in agreement with the 30% AMI salary? Likely not. I would like to maybe move forward with the caveat that we mirror what City of Alameda did, when something similar came up on their council agenda, that they moved to have it put on the ballot, that they could vote as a council, if it were approved by voters, vote on their council meeting to approve it up to 30% of the AMI. So, that means we don't need to have that discussion tonight on whether or not 30% is that target number, 20% that target number, 10% that target number, whatever it may be, but that we allow our constituent to make that decision and vote on it in the next ballot, that we could make that decision to vote up to 30% AMI, if it is approved by our voters. I'm also in agreement with Vice Mayor Mickey that as, as amazing as it would sound to have that much additional income that would significantly help me and my family, I am also in the market of fairness and being a public servant first and foremost. And I think that ties into my original point of running, deciding to run for office, even though I came in knowing that the stipend was not generous at all. But knowing that me running could have major implications on the future makeup of people who do run in Albany. There's no beating around the bush, I'm very likely the first Latino mixed indigenous person to ever been voted on city council in this city. And that did not come easy. I had to have a lot of tough conversations with my partner about that, because that took a lot of time from external work that I was doing, that technically I'm not allowed to do as a UC Berkeley graduate student. They tell us we're not allowed to work outside of that $34,000 salary maximum that they provide us. So, there was a lot that came with that, and as many of you know, my wife was also disabled and still recovering after a very brutal injury. And so, the $300 didn't make it there. If I was aware at, at that time, or not aware, if at that time, there was this, it existed in the charter, like something that was more in alignment with the AMI for Alameda County, I think it would have been a no, no brainer for me and my wife just to, you know, come to an agreement that it's a safe decision to run. But it, I think it warranted me laying all that personal information out there, because I'm certainly not the anomaly when it comes to people who would love to serve the city and would love to, to find creative ways to serve our city in an elective capacity. But I am the, the anomaly in the sense of someone who's willing to make that sacrifice. I don't think I'm a martyr or anything like that, but to make a huge sacrifice like that, you know, and making sure that my wife was okay with that, that's not easy. We, I think we are entitled to have a better compensation. I, I appreciate the both of you bringing this to the table, but as I said, my hesitancy comes around that 30% number. I completely hear and understand the perspective that you bring with that. I think I would be more comfortable with something that's slightly lower than that, and that's why I say maybe tonight's not the time to have that conversation of what that exact percentage should be, but maybe we can move forward with the caveat that the language in there to let voters decide, that we could vote on up to 30% of the AMI as a council, if it is approved at the ballot. And I'll leave my comments there.
So, I'm just gonna parlay on that a little bit, because being, well, being a renter, and I know the assumption is Realtors make tons of money, some of us do, some of us don't always. Also, a single mom with, supporting my two kids, and I am a, you know, I'm, I'm paid on a commission. I do not have a regular salary, so everything that I do has to come out of the time that I have, right? So, that being said, I knew running for this didn't mean that, you know, again, was going to fix any of my money woes, so to speak. But I also wasn't aware, per se, of how much, and this is going back to that running, of how much time and energy I had to take out of my business to make sure that I had an opportunity to be here to serve our community. And that really, really put the screws to me and is still, you know, something that I'm trying to dig out of privately. So, with that being said, you know, I, it's, I understand that side of it definitely, completely. There's the other part of me, which, you know, I was, I was always raised as volunteering, and unfortunately, I'm seeing around our community, just with any different types of volunteer groups, the volunteer pool is getting smaller and smaller. And I believe sometimes that is true, because people are having to work harder and harder. And in order to, you know, get what they need to be able to fulfill what their family needs, they have to spend less time volunteering, instead of more time volunteering. So, this is, this is really a difficult, you know, I, I see both sides of it. I also will have to say that I don't feel like I spend 20 hours a week. I don't have 20 hours a week to give this, but I, whatever time I have to give, and I also rely on staff to, you know, to discuss things, what do I need to know, how much, where can I get this information or that information? And I rely on, on that as well to fill in any of these gaps. But do I feel like I need to spend 20 hours a week on this? No, I do not. So, I just, I want that to be said as well. So, part of it is, yes, I agree that some of the compensation has to come up a little bit, because I can see from that perspective of, if I didn't have as much support that I had with me, as, as many volunteers, as many people standing behind me, there is no way I was going to be able to do this and get here without that. And so, I would like to see that opportunity provided to more people. So, there's kind of this, something's gotta, you know, balance out here. Do I think that this is the answer? Probably not, but let's see where, let's, let's have more discussions. Let's, let's think about this a little bit more further. So, I, I can see kind of both sides to everything is.
Thank you all for thoughtful comments. Just to frame this quantitatively, as I tend to do, so that the amount that's under discussion is an increase of like $160,000 a year. That's in the context of expenditures of $41 million a year. And our representative democracy has basically run on noblesse oblige, which is the idea that those are wealthy, who have leisure time, are the ones that will be here, and I don't think that's right. From 1995 until 2020, I moved here in 91, 94, there was only one person that rented that was ever on the council. So, as the mayor said, this is a pretty unique moment in time. I don't want it to be as unique as it is, and I think it could very easily go away, you know, within an election or two, because we have some people who are willing to make some major sacrifices, as we've heard, to be here. For myself, to put my personal situation into, into, into the public here, I mean, I'm certainly one of the better off financially, if not the best off. I choose to work 80% time at LBL, so I can engage civically and do my civic duty. It costs my family more for me to be here in the meeting than the pay, because my wife is disabled, and so we have to hire somebody to care for her. And the cost now for her care for 40 hours, just 40 hours a week, is $80,000 a year, because she needs that kind of care. So, we're, we're spending savings as it is. Now, we have a lot of savings. I'm not saying I, you know, I need the money or I'm doing this because I need the money, but it's not without consequence. I did bring up with the mayor, you know, maybe, maybe this could be on a sliding scale, because somebody like myself, even though I am in the, operating in the red, I have enough savings that that's not a problem. And our income, our income looks very high, even though we have these insane medical expenses, but I would be opening a lookout, looking at it on a sliding scale, so that it meets the mission of providing access to portions of the community that otherwise wouldn't have access. And so, we can get away from this noblesse oblige antiquated 250-year-old or more concept. As far as the amount of time spent, I, I don't see how I could do the job and with integrity for less than around 20 hours a week. Yes, we only do a strategic plan every two years, but we spend millions and millions of dollars implementing that strategic plan in staff time and otherwise. And if I don't do the work to figure out what are the things that are most effectively done with those millions of dollars, then we're not being effective. So, to, to dismiss the effort as, well, you, you just do policy, well, yeah, we do policy, and that policy guides the spending of millions to tens of millions of dollars. And so, it's not inconsequential, you know? We can make a mistake that has catastrophic consequences for the city potentially. We see other cities nearby that have done that. So, it's, you know, failure is an option, and I think we want to have a body that is more genuinely representative, then we need to compensate people, and as I say, get away from this, this antiquated concept. So, you know, what the amount is, when it goes into effect, you know, all of that is fungible and to be discussed. But I do think I hear appetite for continuing the discussion, which, you know, I had no idea coming into this if there would be or not, so that, that's encouraging. I'm not sure what that looks like going forward. I will turn that to you.
I have, I have a suggestion for how to do that, but I, a couple of things I wanted to say before that. First, just, I wanted to thank everybody on council for sharing personal experience. First, just, I wanted to thank everybody on council for sharing personal experience, for sharing sort of what makes this job possible, but also what makes it difficult, and that is intensely personal, and it is really, it is, I think, exactly what we need to be discussing in this context, and in ways, some of it is deeply saddening to hear of, you know, the sacrifices people make for this, but also very heartening of what we're all willing to do for it. And I think it underscores a lot of the points that we've talked about of why this is difficult, why it needs some form of compensation to make it possible so that people aren't making these difficult decisions to where it is, it does, I'll say, my goal is I, I want council to not be a thing where, in order to run, someone has to consider, how will this make my business harder to run and make me have to do more work to make ends meet? Or a difficult conversation to convince a spouse that it is doable for your family. I, I don't want that to be the case, and I really appreciate that everyone is here despite that being the case, how it is currently. Just one or two more things of, I think as, as we all made clear, there's a big part of this that is unrecognized emotional labor to some extent. We've shared our personal experience and what makes this difficult, but I just want to underscore how unique a job it is in that it, it is, A, it comes with this background of you are expected to be a public servant and do this out of the goodness of your heart and be grateful for the opportunity you're given and willing to do it, and I think that speaks volumes about the quality of people we have in Albany who are willing to do it. And also comes with some other unique emotional tolls. I, I think this is one of the only jobs I can imagine where you are required to read hate mail that insults you, that, and that happens fairly regularly on this council. It's a shame that does, but it does, and that's a part of the job. If that happened to someone I supervise in my day job, the first thing we would do is try and figure out how to stop that happening, but that's not how this works. We cannot stop that happening. In fact, we can't, really not even, we, we could not read it, but that would be doing a disservice of we need to be reading all of our constituent mail, no matter what it says about us. Also note that, you know, we, a couple of us mentioned the difficulty of finding time and doing all the things we could do. Again, I think the goal of being on council is that we want people to say yes to opportunities because the more that our council members are saying yes to opportunities to represent the city, to go to events, to be on those extra boards and commissions, if they're paid or not paid with a per diem, that's nothing but better for Albany. I, I have been lucky enough to be able to appoint, be appointed to several committees on ABAG. Those committees aren't really worth the per diem I get for them, but I think it is much more beneficial to the city of Albany that I make that work and be on those commissions and give our point of view in those policymaking theaters than it would be for me to say, no, I can't really sacrifice the time or the, the time at my day job or something like that. And so I, I, part of this is getting us to a place where people feel comfortable and feel like it's easy to say yes. I have a suggestion for how to continue of, you know, there's a, again, I appreciate the discussion and that everyone has shared how they feel positively and their worries about this, and it sounds like there's a lot of interest in continuing that discussion about both what is the specific amount of this, but also what else should we be thinking about in this vein of should we be compensating other people who volunteer their time for our various committees and commissions? And I think it's a really good question. So in the spirit of continuing that, and I would, I think, attorney, let me know if I'm getting off base on the Brown Act, but we do have on here to form an ad hoc committee as one of the recommendations. I would say that if we wanted to continue this discussion, if the council wanted to form an ad hoc committee to explore continuing this, figuring out what that right amount is for council, looking at what could be possible for committees and commissions for making sure everyone who volunteers their time and does things for the city of Albany out of the goodness of their heart is, finds it easy to do so and doesn't have to balance that with other concerns, that seems like a good way to continue.
Mayor, thank you for asking the question. I think the agenda item was very specific to council salaries, so I don't think tonight we could add in the other commissions because I don't think we agendized it to discuss about compensation for, for other bodies.
Exactly what I thought you were gonna say. That said, tonight, I think we could form that ad hoc committee to explore what the right amount is, and, you know, several of us have mentioned, maybe it's not this amount. It's about what I expected to happen when I put it in there. I think it was a good starting point, as I said at the beginning of this. I'm, I'm willing to choose another amount. I think the main point is figuring out an amount that we feel compensates for the amount of work that's done, and I think what we've heard from all of us here is that what it is right now doesn't do that effectively, and I think that's pretty clear. So, I would recommend we form that ad hoc and maybe at a later date add in the committees and commissions part of it. And I'll mention that already has got my thoughts going about that, and I'll offer a brief aside of, we had that discussion on the East Bay Community Energy Board with our community advisory committee, which gets paid the same amount as EBC commissioners, which is a pretty small amount, but there was some discussion about that that I think would be useful to bring in when we add that. So, if, if folks think that sounds good, I think that would be a good way to go, and I would, would obviously like to serve on that, but I'm open to their suggestions and other ideas.
I guess say at this moment, I'm willing to move forward with, again, with both recommendations, with the only caveat that the language just be changed from increase the salaries of council members to 30% to increase of up to 30%. That way, ad hoc could work on working that out as well with city staff as directed, and then if it is approved by the voters and that language still maintains itself in it, if it is approved and after that election, then we can have that more in-depth discussion, and it also gives us more time to hear from community members and current and past elected alike around that.
Yeah, I would echo what Councilmember Lopez said. I, I would tell you that my first reaction to reading the proposal in front of us was, and I sent these questions to staff, wait, how frequently does AMI change? If we tie it directly to AMI, is that gonna suddenly cause budgetary issues where AMI suddenly jumps 10% or something? But what I really, and, and eventually I got around thinking, well, maybe there's an up to, and something where the language, perhaps, we put in front of the voters and we end up at 30% AMI, but it is not automatically tied to AMI. It takes the vote of council again to then update it to be, if we fall behind AMI, to bring us closer to that AMI. And I would hope that the language and whatever we put in the charter says that that, that cannot, that vote cannot benefit the council members that are actually making the vote. And so in other words, it goes into effect, we're essentially looking to the future and saying, hey, we need an adjustment. We're gonna, we're gonna vote as a council to make that adjustment, but it doesn't go into effect until a new council is seated. And I think that's important because like, was mentioned earlier, you know, we went from $5 a meeting to $300 a month, and that supposedly was going to get adjusted every once in a while, but never really got adjusted. So I recognize that having something that allows us more easily to make adjustments would be beneficial, but I don't like the idea of it being automatically tied to something and just automatically happens. We could be halfway through a biennial budget and suddenly we have to find an extra $50,000 or whatever the amount ends up being. And so, I will say, I'm, I'm still very hesitant about, about this number, but I also recognize I'm coming from a place where I am in, I am not retired, but I am in a situation where I can't afford not to work an extra 10 hours a week at work, that I'm not away from my kids, that I, that I can give this time. But I have talked to many people who want to be on committees and have thought about being in committees, and even trying to do a committee has been too much of a stone block for where there was financial, the family situation, whatever it was, these are people who volunteer, but that level commitment was too much. And the thought that these, that these, that they would run for council, much as it was for me a year ago, is completely alien on how you'd actually make that work. And so, I, I really would, while it is not agendized, I would like us to consider expanding the scope of this through another meeting or whatnot on how are we encouraging people to do this volunteering, recognizing that it is not equal for everyone, the opportunity. One thing that I would like to emphasize that the mayor said, we have had council members who have done an incredible job of representing Albany and representing the interests of the smaller, of, of representing the smaller communities in the Bay Area, and that is what I have learned in the little bit of time on is all the more important. As I've talked to other council members from small communities, they have felt that their voices aren't heard, and so making sure that Albany has the opportunity to raise all of our voices of smaller communities, that the problems, while the problems are important of Berkley's, of Oakland's, of San Jose's, of San Francisco, they cannot consume all the oxygen in the room because what I've seen and what I have heard and learned is, that is essentially what is generally happening right now.
I just want to echo what you said regarding some of the childcare stuff too, and looking at other things that we could bring into, to doing for members of our community who would like to serve, because I do know when my kids were smaller, there was no way I was gonna be able to, to balance that out as much as I wanted to. Thankfully, as they've gotten older, I can, you know, spend a little less time with them, although one of them's not always happy about that. So, so yeah, I would like to, to explore those kinds of other areas that, I know we, we've done it through girl scouting, and, you know, if we need more volunteers, we offer childcare, so that, that usually does help. And again, I, I, I'm not sure that I would be ready to, you know, even say, you know, to place it on the ballot, kind of thing. I, I think that there's just a lot more discussion that needs to happen, and I agree that it shouldn't, even if something were to come into play, like whoever on council voted for that, that it, that it would not affect them, it would, it would be for future council. I also do like the, you know, like what you said regarding, oh yeah, it was $5 a meeting, and then it got to here, but there was no real checks and balances put in there to kind of like, let's every so often pull up the periscope, let's see where we are. You know, is this still working? Does something need to be amended? So there should be some sort of a trigger within there to, to say every so often, this has to be, you know, examined. And, and again, it always resonates to me that, you know, for me, again, saying this is always kind of like, has always been more of a volunteer focus on these things rather than compensation, but I, and, and that was where my, my head was completely walking into here tonight, but then to hear some of the stuff that I'm hearing and kind of actually recognizing what, what it meant for me to, it, it really did bring about, you know, a little bit more, oh, this, this is going to need more discussion, this is going to need more thought. So, I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Well, if there is, I think there's appetite for an ad hoc committee. I would not want to be on it because I've had, I've had my say, but I think we need other, other voices in a way to get those other voices for other people to be on that committee, so I will leave it at that.
Do we have volunteers? And then, after that discussion, do we have anybody who'd like to make a motion in support of what they've said just now?
A refresher, how many may serve on an ad hoc? Two.
Otherwise, it has to be a Brown Act meeting.
Knowing that this is a timely matter, I would ask not to be considered for the ad hoc right now.
I'm gonna kick myself for saying this, but I would be willing to serve on an ad hoc for this.
Thank you for volunteering. Unless there's any other discussion, I heard things that sounded motion-like in this area of the dais, where I can take a crack at it if you guys would like.
Sorry, have we, have we?
We have two volunteers of myself and Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Okay, I was just verifying that you were actually still volunteering.
I, I guess I'm still very much volunteering.
If you want to take a pass at it.
Then, trying to interpret what was said earlier, I think the motion would be that we are directing staff to start preparations on a city charter amendment to increase the salaries of council members up to 30% of AMI for a family of three for the 2024 ballot and to work with an ad hoc committee of myself and Councilmember Hanson Romero on that language and integrating some of the feedback we've had here as well as bringing this back for further discussion.
I could ask a clarifying question. There's two interpretations of up to 30%. One is that it will be a fixed percentage up to 30, you know, it could be 25%, it could be 20, 10, whatever. The other is, I think what I understood Councilmember Lopez to say, which I'm not familiar with the Alameda measure to the degree you are, I, I should have brought up on it, I didn't realize that they, it provided the council latitude to vote itself a salary up to a certain percentage of AMI. I'm not so keen, if, if it's under that interpretation, I'm not so keen on that because in my experience campaigning for four measures successfully, I think you need to be very clear, th- this is what this is about, you know, there's no, there's no wiggle room, this is the proposal, and this is what you're voting on. And I also worry as, you know, I think it's been a fabulous conversation tonight, but it's, it's a fraught topic, as it well should be, and so I worry about future councils not having the bravery or the appetite to vote themselves the, the raise that they really need in order to continue to meet the intent that I think is being expressed here. So I'm more in favor of, you know, picking a percentage of AMI. It's area median income, it's calculated every year, it's what all our tax exemptions and rebates and everything else are based on, and just hardwiring that in and say that's, that's what it's gonna be. But, so I think that those are details the ad hoc committee can work out, but I just wanted to clarify this up to 30%. That's how I'm understanding it, is it'd be a fixed number somewhere up to 30%. But if it comes back with flexibility, then that's what the ad hoc committee decides and we can deliberate then.
I worded the motion so it was not.
Ambiguous.
So it was a little ambiguous to be figured out in drafting this.
Right, well, that's my signing, signing statement.
Exactly. With, with the intention that, you know, we, work is gonna be done on this and it will be brought back for a discussion to iron out some of those details.
Can I ask that staff or the ad hoc committee explorer, I believe the term would be like a trailing AMI, so that it is not based on the most recent AMI, but it is perhaps two years in the past, so that it is way easier to understand the budget implications as opposed to it being, it drops and everyone's budget changes, everyone's salary changes. So, I don't know if it's an average, I don't know if it's a trailing, whatever it is, but I'm, I'm thinking avoid.
Right, or we got 10% inflation, that never happens. Right, or we got 10% inflation, that never happens.
Yes.
Good note, thank you.
I, I have kind of a question here now. In your, in your motion, it was still to continue placing this charter amendment measure on the ballot. Do we have to say that prior to just having an ad hoc to discuss if that's actually still the best approach?
Yes, I'm trying to think how to phrase properly. But yes, I think the intention being that we are not saying with this action, we are putting it on the ballot. You know, I mean, we are saying the ad hoc committee will work, we are directing staff to work with the ad hoc committee on this. And there will be a final decision point in the future of whether or not to put what comes out of that on the ballot.
Or a, or a modified version on the ballot.
Or a modified version, yes.
Or, or we find a different way of doing it rather than do a.
Hint, hint the language of up to 30%. So that allows the ad hoc committee and staff to have those further discussions and then to your point, Brett. And I think that might validate why Alameda had a lower voter approval now hearing what you said if it's not a concrete number, that I think is like 57% approval. If I, if I recollect correctly, I can't pull it up on my screen right now. But I think that's where we're leaning, that's where we're idealizing this, this goal. Right, correct, Aaron?
Yes, and I'll say the, I think as I worded it, the only hard thing we're putting on this really is that it can't be above 30%.
Yeah.
It is up to that and we cannot explore more than that. But we can explore less than that and we can explore all the options included in that and then decide whether or not to put it on the ballot when the time comes.
So since we're still discussing this, I'll note that one of the items that was brought in front of us was that there is the up to 30%, but there was in the memo that you both presented, a question about whether or not the salary for the mayor should be different to compensation. So I would ask that we amend the motion that you in addition, look at possible variance in the pay for the mayor. I'm not saying we go above 30, I'm just saying, when you guys think of whatever number you think it makes sense for council, that you consider whether or not the mayor should be compensated differently.
Good note. And yes, we, we did not discuss mayor as much, but I think it's a good thing to continue discussion of. Maybe I'll try and restate the motion to try and get all of this. Bear with me. Motion would be that we are directing staff to work with an ad hoc committee of the council, including myself and Councilmember Hanson Romero, to explore a city charter amendment that considers increasing the salaries of council members to up to 30% of AMI for a family of three, as well as exploring options for increasing the mayor's salary further.
I will second that.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And thank you all for a long and very meaningful discussion. I really appreciate it. That brings us to council subcommittee reports and reports on appointed representation for Albany. A way of determining who goes first. That is Councilmember Jordan. It was complained that I started with the same people every time. And so I found a way to start randomly.
Tensider, the DM strikes. I love it. Right on. Yeah, so I think the only meeting I've attended since our last council meeting was of the Planning Programs and Legislative Committee of the Alameda County Transportation Commission today and its approved discongestion management plan or recommended it to the, the commission, which is a biannual state required report with a bunch of co-owners. I'll leave it at that.
I actually have no updates.
I attended a League of Californians event. We had the, and I don't have all the names in front of me, but the policy director on, under, for transportation came and spoke with us and was really there to kind of hear what different communities were seeing and needing in terms of transportation, really thinking about next legislative session. And again, as I mentioned earlier, I think that's why it's important that we have volunteers and volunteers who are willing to put the time in to make sure that we as smaller communities are being heard, that our needs are also being heard at the state level. But that's the only update that I have.
No update from Giljack Farm as we have not yet had our additional meeting yet. But I can share that, as I shared last time, they are planning for their harvest festival October 29th, I believe 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. I'll be trying my best to make that. I fly back in to the state that morning. So hopefully I don't have bad jet lag and can make it there. And as for Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District, nothing too new or overly exciting beyond what I shared last time, other than there were discussions about whether or not to continue having meetings accessible via Zoom, just given issues that have recently become rampant for public meetings that are hosted on Zoom. Little back and forth discussion among trustees like myself who are not able to make the drive down there to advocate that these meetings remain accessible, not just for trustees, but for anyone who may randomly from the public want to join. I think my time serving so far, we've had one person in the public join. So I'll see if I could maximize that number by 100% by the time my tenure is done.
Thank you. I went to an East Bay Community Energy Executive Committee meeting on the 4th, though it may not have been a full. Committee due to some Brown Act issues. But we were able to hear an informational item on the Healthy Communities Program, which is their pilot to install induction stove top ovens and electrical stoves in a variety of lower income properties and properties with people who suffer from asthma. It's very early on the program. They're doing a pilot program to really figure out the practicalities of implementing that, which is a necessary step. So it was encouraging. I'll also mention, we had a town hall on the 5th to discuss the Albany Twin, where we had, I think, our final count around 80 people, something like it, which was a great turnout for a meeting that when I was entering, I wasn't sure if there would be five or 50, and there were 80. And we heard a lot of people's concerns and will have some follow-up that we are working on getting from some questions there. And I just wanted to, again, appreciate all staff's work that went into making that possible. There was also an ABAG Legislative Committee meeting on the 13th. I won't try and summarize everything that happened at the legislature, but there's a lot, including some cleanup legislation for BAFSA and some ability to make other regions able to form a BAFSA-like entity, which is, I think, really great. I'll also mention another big headline was that ACA 1 passed the legislature this year, which is Aguirre Curry's bill to lower the threshold that bonds need in order to pass from a super majority to 55%, which as anyone who's followed a lot of the bonds in the Bay has realized, they fail with 60% of the vote a lot of the time. Important thing. Also mentioned, because it was alluded to by Councilmember Lopez, ABAG's, because ABAG is a body that covers the nine county Bay Area, it's very difficult to get everybody in the same room and require, that would require an inordinate amount of travel for some people. So they are working with the legislature for Brown Act reform that would make it easier for remote access to meetings. With how that currently is working, it's not quite there, but hopefully will be next time, but would be for non-final decision-making bodies to make that even easier for them, make it more accessible for, again, for those people who volunteer or for the committees that feed into the larger ones. So they are actively working on that and, and take it as, as their, one of the things that they should be leading on the charge on, given that they are perhaps the most affected by that difficulty of getting everybody in the same room. So hopefully we'll have more updates about that in the next session. I think that was it. Just ask, because we have a representative on the Housing Authority in the room. There's not a report attached, but I wanted to see if you have anything to report or that you'd like to make us aware of.
I, I will say that I sent you the report and you have it. But the one thing I want to highlight, and I, you know, we meet so that the day the agenda goes out. So I'm always like two weeks behind, but I think this was the last meeting, is my point, that we met many of the scholarship winners. As I've, I've mentioned to you before that HACAA Awards scholarships, some to graduating high school seniors, some to people getting master's degrees, there's a whole gamut of people. We had about seven or eight of them, some of whom brought their babies that they had, have had very, very recently, actually. There was a mother there because her son was at UC Davis and couldn't come down, but she was there to accept the check. And it, it's a piece of the Housing Authority that I think we, that most people miss, that there's a lot of really great stuff that goes on besides housing people, which obviously is the most important thing, but also helping them improve their, their station in life in, in really, really meaningful ways. And so I just kind of wanted to call that out to you, that we actually saw these people because, because of COVID, you know, we haven't seen them. So it was, it was really nice. Thank you for the opportunity to say that.
Thank you for being here to make the report and we appreciate it. Any public comment on this item? None, we'll go to future agenda items. I'll note that from our earlier discussion, I have one about widening the scope of some of our discussions to include committee compensation. Are there any other future agenda items anyone wants to note? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public with their hand raised? Seeing none. That brings us to announcements of city meetings and events. I ask everyone to take a look at the meetings of all of our commissions and committees that are coming up. Our next council meeting will be on November 6th. And with that, that brings us to adjournment. Thank you to all the other council members, vice mayor, clerk, city manager, city attorney, all the other staff who joined us and the public who was with us the whole time. We are adjourned. Thank you.